This meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. Chief Wolverton will give the invocation and Councilwoman Tabitha Taylor will you please lead us in the pledge.
Stand please.
May we pray. Father God, we give you praise today for all that you've done for us and all your blessings. We're so thankful for everything you've given us and we would be nothing without you and, Father, we want to recognize that today. We thank you for this day you made, may we rejoice and be glad in it. We pray as you be with us as we go through this meeting, pray for our elected officials who make decisions, give them wisdom, give them guidance, discernment, Lord, for what's best for our city and our citizens. Be with our mayor and all of his staff, Lord, I lift them up to you, I thank you for all your blessings upon them and continue to bless them. Bless our city, Lord, watch over, protect it, protect every citizen, protect all of our city workers that are working each day out there so hard, provide for our citizens. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, will you call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, here.
Councilwoman Bowman, here.
President.
Councilwoman Bowman, here.
Councilwoman Bowman, I'm here.
Councilwoman Bowman, here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, August 25th meeting? That's a motion by Councilman Green, a second by Councilman Bowman. Call for the vote. It passes unanimously. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
I do, Madam Chair.
Ladies first, we'll start with Councilwoman Taylor.
I have two guests that I'm actually giving three minutes each. The first one I'm gonna call is Darren Dixon and Tyler Madison if he's present. Both are present, are going to speak here on behalf of the Shreveport Boja African-American Chamber and this is in response to Resolution 109, recognizing African-American businesses and this being African-American Business Month. So, we can leave with whomever would like to speak first.
Yeah, I'll kick it off. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I was told to stay on script today. I'm very passionate about what is before you today. August was National Black Business Month. We felt that there needed to be a focus on black businesses on a national scale. We wanted to make sure that on a local front that black businesses here in Shreveport were taken care of. COVID-19 has had an overwhelming effect on the state of black businesses with our local black business owners taking a hard hit. It is our job as the Black Chamber to ensure that not only that they're taken care of, but they're looked after, not only in this month that we're going to be promoting them, but every month. We feel like this particular month is very important considering this virus that is hampering what's going on. We have various events that have been posted on various social media platforms as well as press releases on things that we're going to be doing that include lunch and learns that'll be done virtually. We're going to be supporting black businesses every Friday in the restaurant industry. So, we're definitely asking for your support in this and we look forward to earning that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor for offering this, Councilwoman Taylor for offering this resolution. It's hard for me to call you Councilor anything because I've been calling you Madam Secretary for about 10 years, but be that as it may, I'm glad you took this on and recognize the importance that black businesses not only have in this country but specifically to Shreveport Boja. It's imperative on this city, as people may wonder why we're doing this, it's important that we undergird this special group of businesses because when given the demographic of this city and the need for this demographic to do well, it therefore, thereby props up and becomes the backbone of the entire economy. We need African-Americans to do well so all businesses can do well. So, we thank you for your support on this and not just you, but the whole of City Council. We thank you for your, hopefully, your support for this resolution and what it means and also we'd like to see you all making effort from the city perspective to make a special effort to visit these businesses, support these businesses, not just this month, but going forward perpetually.
I want to thank you all for actually the charge that you all have had in going in and navigating that process for relationships that are so important to our city. So, I'm thankful for the collaborations in the past, the collaborations now, and the collaborations that are forthcoming. So, I'm gonna ask the Council to support this resolution. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Council.
My next guest will be Terrence Nguyen. If you could make your way to the front. There are some of you that may not know Mr. Nguyen, but I want to introduce you to him And I'm gonna allow him to tell his story, but his story is so pertinent to the number of things that when we talk about violence within our city. But Mr. Nguyen offers a different perspective and he has facilitated a number of activities with the walk that we had on Sunday for Minion Jackson, meeting with our police department to help in support with initiatives for what we mean about building community and making sure that we help to curtail crime that is within our area. So, he's the Executive Director of Pike and I'm gonna allow him to speak for about three minutes to the Council.
Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I'm Terrence Nguyen, the Director of Pike. Pike stands for Priorities, Intentions, and Practical Exchanges. Our priorities in Pikes is to create safe communities, provide opportunities, educate, stop the flow from our communities to prison, and help those that's returning from prison. Our intentions are based on the same thing. And the practical exchanges is to exchange ignorance for education, to exchange fear for love, to exchange the streets for homes, and to exchange loss for gain. We're working with the community. We are, we're in the streets. We're where the crimes is happening at, where the murders are happening at. We are there. And we go around, we speaking to people because the only way we're gonna stop the crime is to, we gotta stop the crime. It's gotta not happen. So, if it don't happen, we won't be able to talk about it. So, we're out there, and I just come from prison, I just did 30 years. I went at the age of 16. So, I was a lost kid during those times. So, if someone was coming from prison to speak to me, I would've listened to him then because I knew he came from prison because I was on the road for it and I knew that I was on the road for it. So, being that I was that little kid that these little kids have become, I'm speaking to these kids because I don't want to see mothers crying neither way because every mother's gonna cry in these situations. It's a sad situation that we're facing in the city, but you know, we gotta show love to, we gotta show love in these situations. We can't show anger and anger is being shown because everybody's angry about these crimes that's being committed, but you can't anger our crime, you gotta love our crime and you gotta come with solutions. I mean, we have AA for alcoholics, we have NA for narcotics, but we don't have anything for murderers. And we got murderers on the street, we gotta face that fact. And I don't know, could you recognize a murderer when you see one? None of us probably could because something triggers us. So, that's a mental health problem, but we got to identify those problems before it happens so that we don't have any more Minion Jacksons or any other innocents like the little girl that died yesterday. I mean, we crying, but we gotta start trying. We gotta start trying to help the person with that gun, put down that gun so he don't kill nobody. And that's what Pikes is about. We're about identifying that problem and stopping that problem so that we don't have to bring our problems to the City Council. So, that's what we're doing and we hope that y'all could team up with us to help us try to rid our problems because we started on the Cooper Road. We've had balloon releases, we just had the Minion Jackson walk, but we're gonna touch every community. We gonna be Cedar Grove next because these are higher crime areas. So, we ask that y'all support us because we trying to make our city better and it's not just talk, it's action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Don't leave. For, again, to allow me to reiterate, Mr. Nguyen went to jail when he was 16 years old, spent 30 years in Angola. For the point that he wanted to make at the time that he terrorized the streets, he's coming back now to make sure that he will undo what has already been done by giving back and taking this, his knowledge and his experience to the street to help stop the street war that we have going on right now. So, I respect the fact of what it is that he doing, he's doing and is, I'm offering my support with that. For those of you that are here for the hearing for Right Way Liquor, that hearing is going to be postponed until September 22nd at the next council meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recognize some firefighters and police officers today who, when I got the word as to how they handled a situation in my district that could've been a tragedy, but they turned it into something good. A young man was going up and down the street, terrorizing the street, he was an active shooter. They came on the scene and they were some heroes. And a lot of times we talk about people when they do bad stuff, but I just think that when it's great and when it's good and when we have heroes in our midst, I just think that we ought to recognize them. I've never met them, but I've wanted to meet them to just say thank you for using your training, whatever your ability that took place that day, I'd just like to say thank you and I thank God for giving you that ability. So, this time I'd like to recognize all of those officers and I'd just like for everybody in the Council to just stand and give them a hand because they are living heroes in our city.
Danielle is going to read the resolution and the names and then we'll join you all down.
Councilman Green, do you want to vote on it in regular order?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to, yeah.
Or suspend the rule?
I'd like to suspend the rule, Madam Chair. It's okay.
The motion to suspend the rule is second from...
There's nothing, you drafted a letter, not a resolution to all those.
Okay.
So, there's nothing to suspend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like me to proceed and read this?
Yes.
This is a letter to Sergeant Daryl Coney, Sergeant Paul Owen, Carrie Ross, Lieutenant Mike Harvey, Stephen Wilkinson, William Wright, Randall Dever, DeMarcus Peoples, Corporal John Sheen, Corporal Cedric Jones, Officer Lucas London-Durran, Officer Delandro Washington, Officer Michaela Dean, Officer Philip Jackson, Officer Eric Carroll, Officer Torian Wesley, Officer Taylor Horton, and Officer Lloyd Barry. "I would like to express my sincere thanks for you and your efforts to help the capture of an active shooter in the 4500 block of Alton Street. Your training, hard work, and commitment in protecting the lives and property of the citizens of the city of Shreveport was demonstrated on August 6, 2020. Thank you for your service and for being our hero. Please keep up the spirit and stay safe."
Now, I was just gonna add a couple of comments, if that's okay, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
I really always appreciate the opportunity to recognize our officers, the men and women in the Police Department do excellent work on a daily basis. A number of the good deeds they do go unnoticed because they're not shared. We simply don't have the time to put out all the emails that I receive on a daily basis of officers truly going above and beyond. But certainly the evening of August 6th could've turned out differently. By many accounts, the officers would've been justified using lethal force, as it turns out. No force was used. The Jim received the help that he needed through a facility set up to help someone that had some emotional and some mental issues. So, the officers recognized that there were some concerns with the behavior and were able to act appropriately. And so, I think that, I thank Councilman Green for recognizing them and wanting to call them before the public to recognize their good deeds. Thank you.
The chief said that the firefighters that were involved in not being here today, but we have a certificate for each of one of you, so chief, you could recognize them.
I'll hand that to you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you all.
Councilman Bowman is gonna take a picture.
Can I get somebody to take a picture?
I got you.
All right, thank you.
I'm tall enough.
You want me to assume the positions?
You know what? I didn't have to come down there and rearrange anybody, y'all get kudos for that. I normally have to rearrange folks. Are there any other guests, council colleagues? Councilman Bowman?
I don't see her, but I would like to call up Antoinette Davenport. I know that Councilwoman Taylor spoke that the Right Way Liquor would be postponed, but I still wanted her to just brief the speech of why you came down today.
Okay, good evening to the Councilman Mayor. My name is Antoinette Davenport and I came down today because I had created the petition to shut down Right Way Liquor Store in the MLK area located in the Cooper Road area, myself and the family of Cortez Woods were affected by killings that went on at the Right Way Liquor Store and we have just been working diligently to find closure and peace and definitely justice for my family, which is the Davenport family. Jeremiah Davenport was my cousin and he passed at the Right Way Liquor Store and also Cortez Woods also passed and our families have been in connection, working to kind of just bring peace in the community and to just kind of have a better outlook of what it comes down to. In my personal opinion, I feel like it's kind of like no hope for the MLK neighborhood because it's mainly filled with liquor stores and things that kind of don't promote openness in life and I was trying to just reach out and go try to, other options to kind of bring something more positive into the neighborhood and to definitely cut down on the crime rate in the Cooper Road neighborhood.
So, this was also personal to you as well as something good for the community, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
That was one family member or two?
My family member was Jeremiah Davenport, but like a year after he was killed, another guy, Cortez Woods, was also killed at the same location. And once that happened, members of his family and myself came in connection to try to see what we could do to get it resolved in a positive way.
Okay. And Councilwoman, that's back on for the 20...
Ms. Davenport, I asked, because I asked Ms. Rogers to try to reach out to you when I first learned of this coming on the 8th. Because so much of this predated me coming into this seat and I apologize seriously.
Yeah, I have been trying to come say, it's okay.
Because I really thought that this was going to happen today. And so, I got word, just latter part of this afternoon, that we had to postpone it until the 22nd, but the 22nd is when it's going to happen for sure.
Okay.
So, I ask for you to come back at that time. At any time that you need me, call me and to speak to what you speaking regarding economic development in liquor stores, I had that conversation two weeks ago regarding MLK because I'm a Cooper Road kid myself.
Right.
And I know exactly how our community was built and we're gonna get right back to it.
Amen.
So, I stand right here with you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport.
Y'all have a blessed day.
You too. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Colleagues, any other guests? Okay, we'll move on. Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests today?
I do. The first comment, I want to touch on Hurricane Laura. We had widespread damage across the city after Laura pushed through, but thankfully we had no loss of life or injuries reported. And I want to commend our team that worked tirelessly to make sure our citizens were safe and informed during the storm. We still have crews working to clear debris from the hardest-hit areas throughout the city. Since the storm, our folks have worked extra hours to get a handle picking up storm debris in many neighborhoods and they'll be pushing to other neighborhoods over the next coming days. So, just bear with us and we will get to your areas. Please go to shreveportla.gov to check out the schedule for your particular neighborhood. Secondly, I want to continue to stress the importance of the census. We need to make sure Shreveport is counted. Anyone who still needs to complete the census can call 844-330-2020. One more time, 844-330-2020. And I'm gonna make that announcement up until the final day that we complete that census. So, if you haven't completed your census yet, please do so. Please tell your family members, friends to complete the census so that Shreveport is counted. Lastly, I want to bring Chief Raymond up one more time, can you, so that he can introduce and recognize Home Depot staff member, Kendell Booker, who showed exceptional bravery in pursuing a suspect that injured one of our officers.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would like to ask Mr. Booker to come up as well as Sergeant Ortiz and Officer Curtis. Join me, please.
Mayor, a shoplifting or theft suspect was attempted to be apprehended at the Home Depot on August 3rd of 2020 by Officer Curtis. Sergeant Ortiz had chased the gentleman into the parking lot where he produced a box cutter and was able to cut Officer Curtis on her neck and vest. Luckily, she was wearing the vest. It's actually being determined to save by the vest company because it did take a lot of the blunt trauma from that blade. Sergeant Ortiz and Kendell Booker were working at the time as well and both assisted in taking him into custody without any further injury to the suspect or to the officers on scene. And so, I want to thank Mr. Booker for a job well done and we're gonna offer him an application and hope to see him in the next category.
Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to give Mr. Booker an opportunity to make a comment if he wanted to. I don't want to put him on the spot, it's okay if he don't want to. Yeah, you can come up and make a comment. I was teasing him about his Cowboys, the Cowboys sign on his apron, so...
First, I want to thank the city of Shreveport for the opportunity. I also would like to take the time to express our gratitude, our, how much assistance we get from the Shreveport newly formed ORC team. I moved to this area from Dallas doing what I do at Home Depot roughly a year ago and I've reached out to Sergeant Ortiz and talked about the things that, you know, we was liking having these companies, you know, being where I am with Home Depot, dealing with all the Home Depots and the loss that we have sustained. Well, they managed to get together and put together this Shreveport Organized Retail Crime Task Force and it has been wonderful. We've been able to get probably over 100 arrests since it has been implemented and it's doing us a great favor for, you know, people thinking that they can just come in and out of these different businesses and committing crimes. But they work, they work hands over fist to get the job done and get these people identified. So, I want to thank the Shreveport Police Department, the chief for allowing it and also all the great men and women. And it even go for Shreveport Patrol, call them, say, hey, look, I've got a theft in progress and they're there and they take care of business. So, I really appreciate that, Home Depot appreciate that, and well as the other businesses here in the city of Shreveport.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I want to get, is Officer Ortiz still here? Would you like to come up or, would you like to come up? Either, I don't want. Oh, Officer Curtis, I'm sorry, Officer Curtis, do you want to come up and say any words? I know you well enough to know you weren't gonna do it anyway. Yeah, well, she goes out there every single day and put her life on the line for our safety, so I just want to commend you personally, Officer Curtis. Hopefully, we get to do some PT soon with the group again. Lastly, I want to bring up Chief Wolverton as well.
Good afternoon, Council. I'd like to make a few recognitions today. Just recently, we had a couple of house fires within a month or two of each other, one on Randolph Street, one on Hollywood, where some of the same crew members actually made the saves. That's almost unheard of, that you'd make two rescues within that short timeframe period. Many firefighters go their entire career and never make a rescue and many of these today made a great rescue. One of these was on Hollywood Street, came in actually right before one of our meetings and mentioned it to you in the past, and they just got there very quickly, made a quick entry, quick search and rescue and saved the lives of three of our citizens. And that's something that's worthy of recognition. So, as I call your name, please come up if you're here. The first one. Certificate of Commendation to Captain David Burden for his exceptional performance of duty while responding to a residential structure fire on June 29, 2020 at 2621 Randolph Street. Upon rescue nine arrival, you and your crew members, along with Engine 15 crew members, were assigned to conduct search and rescue. You were able to find a victim in the front room of the home and along with help from Engine 15, crew members were able to remove the victim from the home and get her to immediate advance life support treatment and transport. Your heroic efforts are worthy of commendation and as because of your professional training, courage, and commitment to serve, a life was saved that day. Given onto my hand, the city of Shreveport, 8th day of September. His other crew member was Fire Engineer Carl Wolf. And his remaining firefighter was Colt Galvin. Certificate of Commendation to Fire Captain Mark Allen for exceptional performance of duty while responding to residential structure fire on June 29, 2020, 2621 Randolph Street. Rescue nine and Engine 15 searched and rescued victims from the home. You, along with Engine nine crew members, began immediate advance life support treatment, law medical, met 15 crew to save the life of this victim. Heroic efforts are worthy of commendation as because of your professional training, courage, and commitment to serve, that a life was saved that day. This is Engine nine captain. His engineer was Brian Foster. And his firefighter was Alexio Thomas. Ma'am?
He married my baby cousin, that's why I had to woo-woo.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Kenfolk. He married my baby cousin.
He married her cousin.
Oh. He has not shared that with me. That's vital information.
Because he probably doesn't want to end up on your bad list.
Firefighter Bradley Alexander. Captain Elijah actually retired effective Sunday. Fire engineer Leonard Moyer. You know, on a house fire, it's not just the crew that, the firefighting crew that goes in... goes in and does the search and rescue. Once they bring the victim out, there has to still be a lot done. This is going to be the medic crew. This is Fire Engineer David Comer for his exceptional performance of duty while responding to a residential structure fire on June 29, 2020, 2621 Randolph Street. Rescue 9 and Engine 15 searched and rescued a victim from the home. You were assigned to the medic unit and immediately began advanced life-saving treatment and transport. Your heroic efforts are worthy of commendation, and it is because of your professional training, courage, and commitment to serve, that a life was saved that day. And his EMT riding him that day was firefighter Ben Allison. Paramedic. Apologize. All right, that was a fire on Randolph.
Hey, Chief, I'm going to come down and get a picture.
That's why I normally have to rearrange everything.
How many of y'all stay up here? Some of these same people you see in front of me also made the rescue on the Hollywood fire. This is going to be Rescue 9 Crew. Certificate of Commendation to Captain David Burden for exceptional performance of duty while responding to a residential structure fire on July 27 at 1543 Hollywood Avenue. You and your Rescue 9 crew members began fighting fire and found a victim in the living room. You immediately brought the victim out, where Engine 15 crew members and medic unit crew members began immediate advance life support and treatment. Your heroic efforts are worthy of commendation, and it is because of your professional training, courage, and commitment to serve, that you saved the life of two citizens that day. And his firefighter was Colt Goblin. This is going to be Engine 9 Crew. Fire Captain Mark Allen for exceptional performance of duty while responding to a residential structure fire, July 27, 2020, 1543 Hollywood Avenue. You and your Engine 9 crew members began fighting fire and found a victim in the living room. You immediately brought the victim out, where Engine 15 crew members and medic unit crew members began immediate advance life support and treatment. Heroic efforts are worthy of commendation, and it is because of your professional training, courage, and commitment to serve that day, the life of two citizens were saved. And his crew, Fire Engineer Brandon Barber. Engine 15's crew was waiting on each victim as they came outside the house with them and actually began working on them immediately, right there on the sidewalk, and getting them ready to load up in the medic unit to transport. It's because of those quick efforts, they got the airway open and those things, those medical life-saving techniques, that these two gentlemen are still living. Fire Captain Robert Thomas. Fire Engineer Mark Myers.
Y'all probably all know this guy.
Since there were two victims, there were two medic units utilized in the transport because each one was considered a critical victim. The four members on the medic unit were Fire Engineer Clifford Kell. Fire Engineer Marcus Hines. And firefighter Cortez Buck Jackson. I just want to say to all these gentlemen, well done. They made a difference that day at those fires. So I appreciate what they do, and I know it's definitely worthy of recognition. They do a lot more, but it's definitely worthy of being recognized today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Green, before we start our reports, did you want to bring Chief Raymond back up?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chief, thank you. I've been trying to get some information from your office for almost a month now, for the last three or four weeks, and maybe, I don't know if we need a consultant to do it or not, but I got part of it. For an instance, I wanted to know how many African-American officers you all had, and I discovered you had 283. Wanted to know how many sergeant, how many jump-out boys, how many narcotics agencies, how many was in the academy, how many captains, how many lieutenants, how many corporals? I wanted, basically, broken down into the, as to, I thought you all operated in units. Yes, sir. I wanted to know how many African-Americans was in charge of units, and I also wanted to know that since you've been chief, I know there's an inner circle as to how many African-Americans are in your inner circle, and I know that out of the 283 it has that you had 46 supervisors. I wanted to know what was it that they were supervising? And so that's some of the basic stuff that I wanted. I keep getting part of, but not all of it. And then my last question is, what would be a circumstance that would bring about seven officers on a scene? What would be a good scenario that seven, eight officers would show up? What would have to be going on?
Really, what we consider any category-one crime, which could be a shots fired, a major accident, anything where a life was in danger or an officer called for assistance. When an officer calls for assistance, there's generally not time to say, this is exactly what's going on. So if an officer calls for assistance, every officer within earshot goes to it. And then when you get there, as long as the scene's under control, then the supervisor says, okay, we don't need all seven or all eight of you. Y'all go back and start answering calls. You two were the original responders, you're going to take care of the report, et cetera. But it's not uncommon to have seven officers go to multiple calls every day.
So for an instance, if you'd have a call about, say, a person was in a business disturbing the peace with that and that, to have about seven or eight officers to show up?
Not just the fact that you have a person in a business disturbing the peace, no. But I'm assuming, I'm going to make an intelligent guess here, that it happened in a similar incident, and I can't speak to the specifics of that call, but if you send me, you know, where it happened and when, I can determine why the officers showed up. But I can tell you from my position, I would rather have more officers show up, and then we don't need them, and they leave, versus we needed more officers to show up and we didn't have them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. And I work on that information. We don't, I can get what you want, I probably have to do it myself. You wanted to know specifically.
So say for an instance, right now, off the top of your head, how many sergeants you got?
We have 99 sergeants.
And so out of that 99, how many of them would be African-Americans?
I'd have to get that for you. And again, you know, I think I clarified this in the email, make sure, I'd rather say it now. With the exception of the chief of police, the deputy chief of police, and the chief administrative assistant.
Yeah, I got that part.
So you only promote based on the person ahead of you promoting?
Right. So for an instance.
Probably close to half, I'd guess.
So say for an instance, at the academy, how many African-Americans work out there?
May just be one at the moment, no more than two.
Okay. And so for an instance, at the academy, that's where the officers go through before they hit the streets?
And ongoing training, annual training.
Right. And ongoing training. So therefore, you know, you got 50%, 52% African-Americans in the city, but in the academy, you possibly only have one African-American. So basically, when those officers that are not African-Americans, once they hit the street, then how do they have the wherewithal to interact with what's going on in the African-American community? And I just, those are just some things we can talk about, but those are some of the specifics that I wanted.
Yeah, I'll do my best to put it together. We don't keep records in that manner, but I can do my best to put it together.
So will we need a consultant to go through the position?
No, I can do it. It can be done, it's just we don't keep records in that manner. I can go through it individually, person by person, and tell you if they're black or white, just take me a little bit of time.
Yes, sir. And the units, as to?
And the units.
Yeah, as to, who are the people that's in charge, and how does it work, and how do you get to be? Thank you, Chief. But any questions, you can give me a call.
Hold on, Chief. Councilwoman Taylor?
Chief, I'm sorry, I was intended to do this earlier. I spoke with Minyon Jackson's mother on Sunday, out at the walk. She's an extraordinary lady, as she told the crowd and told the young man that was arrested that she forgives them. So I actually want to thank SPD for their efforts in arresting the suspects in his death. Minyon Jackson, if you all don't know, has now, the Green Bay Packers and the Pittsburgh Steelers have recognized him as an honorary member of their football teams. And at the end of practice, they had a moment of silence. But I want to thank SPD, as well as this community, for coming in and calling in tips that would lead to the arrest of these individuals. So a courageous woman, at best. I don't know if I would have had the ability to do what she did in that manner, but I just wanted to make sure that I told you all that, and for the team that he loved. And Mayor Perkins, thank you for assisting in turning the lights green on the interstate in his honor.
I think Gary Norman is here. That was a call to Gary. Gary did the work. I'll pass off the.
Thank you.
Hold on, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to diminish the impact of everything Councilwoman Taylor just said, but there was something about what Councilman Green was asking, that I want to follow up with, I went asking that we all receive that information? But also, I want to just see if I can expand on this to see if we have a similar question. Promotions happen by time, right? Like longevity and merit and all that, right?
Promotions happen, with the exception of the chief, the deputy chief, and chief administrative assistant, based on tenure and a score on civil service test.
Okay. But transfers from one division to the next, those happen based on the policy and the general order on transfers?
Most of them do. Now, by policy, as well as by law, I can transfer anybody I want for the fishing operation of the police department. In general, I transfer supervisors. I handpick the supervisors I want, particular units. But officer corporals, we have a process, and depending on a specific unit, there's different prerequisites. Some involve physical fitness tests, some involve shooting tests, all of them involve an interview and a written test of some sort, and I have always, from the day I got the position, appointed whoever the number-one applicant was when we have a testing process, regardless of race, color, or anything else.
So there's a consistent protocol for moving people from any division to any other division?
Not any, there's a, yes, there's a protocol within units, but it's not exactly the same. So for example, the academy instructors, within the last decade, have not gone through a testing process. Those people have been hand-selected by the chief for about a decade now. Many units, the standard operating procedure is to have a testing process. For example, we have a test, we have a process out right now for a homicide investigator. They'll go through the testing process, and whoever tests out on top will get the position.
But what about, let's say, Lake Patrol?
Lake Patrol, sometimes we appoint, sometimes we do a testing process, depends. The last, the most recent person we put to Lake Patrol, we assign because we're eliminating a unit within administration. There was an opening on Lake Patrol, this person was qualified for, so we just transferred her.
So it's still based on certain logic and not just a case-by-case basis, willie-nilly?
Certainly, yes. Ultimately, I'm responsible for this assignment of all 500, today, 497 police officers.
Okay. Because I guess the thing I was wondering about is if within the policy, in the general order, how much elasticity is in there that gives leeway to anything being done on a case-by-case basis versus everyone getting consistent treatment based on the policy and other prerequisites?
The policy does allow for the chief of police to move anybody he or she sees fit based on the fishing operation police department, and that is done. In general, we try to follow a testing process for any rank below that of a supervisor. We haven't had a testing process for a supervisor ever, to my knowledge. That's always been someone that the chief has selected based on their previous experience, knowledge, training, et cetera.
Got it. Okay, that, okay, Councilman Green.
Yeah, so for an instance, Chief, and of course, like you say, you'll get it to all of us, and that'd be fine. Say, how would you get on the jump-out squad?
Yeah, that's a testing process every time.
So how do you get into the narcotics division?
Well, it depends on what, the narcotics division includes street-level addiction unit, which you're referring to, the jump-out boys, mid-level investigations unit, which now also includes vice, because I eliminated vice unit personnel purposes, intel unit, and asset forfeiture, as well as the federal task forces. We have an officer assigned to all the federal task forces. So if there's an opening, and generally, the opening in narcotics, to get your foot in the door, so to speak, comes in the form of street-level or mid-level. Generally, those individuals that test out highest, or that are transferred to, say, a federal agency, come from within narcotics because they've already got experience working narcotics investigations. So typically, a first person transfers in narcotics initially by getting into the street-level addiction unit, intel, or the mid-level investigation unit.
So how does it work for your officers to go to different trainings, as to trainings that would empower them to rise to another position? How are they selected?
They put in a request through their chain of command, and it goes up through, usually through the CAA first to determine whether we have money for that particular training, whether we can allow that person the time off to attend.
Okay. And then, I don't know if I asked this, but how do you get to be a train in the academy?
Generally, you have to have expertise in a particular area. So for example, I was transferred to the academy by Chief Shaw on his last day of employment before resignation. I didn't ask to go. I had 14 years as a SWAT trainer, and I was an instructor in a number of disciplines. I was a firearms instructor, explosives instructor, rappel master, sniper instructor, patrol rifle instructor. So he just said, you're going to the academy. You know, you've got the experience and the knowledge to teach other people. Generally, it's someone of that nature. The last two people that have been transferred to the academy were firearms instructors because you have to have a post-certified firearms instructor to qualify all police officers. That's their annual qualification, that's if they've been gone more than 15 days, that's if they're attending the police academy. You have to be post-certified. We've only got five post-certified firearms instructors in the entire department, and I'm one of them. And then there are two at the academy right now. One is about to make lieutenant, and generally, when you make the rank of lieutenant, you'll transfer out. And so that would only leave one firearms instructor at the academy. So the most recent position that came open, we had to transfer another person who was already a firearms instructor. You get one opportunity a year to pass the test. This year, the opportunity passed us by because it would have been in April. have been in April. COVID-19 was on top of us, so there was no opportunity this year to become a firearms instructor. We had five people lined up to go. Those same five people will be training to go next April. But you get one shot, you take four different tests, and if you fail any of those tests, you're done for the year. So it's very difficult. It's a very high failure rate. Um, when I went, we had a hundred and fifty people that started the first course of fire. Thirty-one of us were left after the first course of fire, and we still had to shoot three more. So the academy is a little bit of a different animal. You really need to have a specialty. Generally, it's firearms or defensive tactics. Our defensive tactics instructors are master instructors, which means we don't have to pay somebody to come in and teach all of our officers, which is a couple thousand dollars a person. So that, the people that have that certification got it prior to going to the academy, and we utilize that expertise as instructors. So the academy really depends on who's leaving, who we're having to replace. The person we're replacing was a firearms instructor, and so it made sense that we had to replace them with a firearms instructor.
So right now, you got how many instructors at the academy?
It will be three as of, uh, next week.
Okay.
Today, there's two.
Today, there's two?
Yes.
And one of them, African-American?
Not firearms instructors, no.
No, I mean, how many instructors do you have?
Oh, total instructors, right now, uh, six or seven.
Six or seven.
And, and one's African-American, two are Hispanic, and the other three are, are white, I believe.
Okay. And so they just be, they gotta have some type of training and all of that before they can go on?
You need to have some experience to be an instructor, right? We, we don't, that's generally not a position we move somebody into and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna train you up. It's generally something where you have some background already, some instruction experience, some specialty, um, and then we move you out there.
Okay. Say for an instance, if I was an officer and I wanted to get training in X, Y, Z, and I go to, I guess I'd go to my supervisor and say I want to be, then the, does the supervisor have the option as to say yea or nay? Uh, uh, how does that work?
Yeah, technically, the supervisor could say, no, we can't afford to let you go to that training that week because we're short-staffed or something of that nature. Generally, what will happen is the immediate supervisor will forward it up the chain of command. Ultimately, the chief administrative assistant, Marcus Mitchell, will get it and say, okay, the class costs two thousand dollars, we don't have the money. We do have the money, and then, and then forward it to me for, or Deputy Chief White. Do we want to spend this money on this training?
Okay.
But I'm, I'm a big proponent of training. Normally, if someone asks for it and we can afford it, we will send them.
Okay. So do you, I don't know if you know or not, but are there very many people who will get declined? Or you wouldn't know that right off?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head. I could, I could find out, but I don't know the numbers, no, sir.
Okay. Well, Chief, would you get this to us, to all the council members and-
Do you think you can email him all the questions? That's a lot. Y'all done ridiculed this man and barbecued him and everything. Can you email him all those questions?
He got an all. Already sent, this been going on for like three, four weeks.
Okay.
You didn't know?
I've replied to a lot of it, but it's not, I understand, I understand what he's wanting out.
We're just kind of meal-piddling it together, but-
Ooh, that's a lot of, that's a lot of piddling together. Y'all done barbecued. Chief, go get you some water.
Yeah. But, hey, Chief, but listen, this is very important to me, because I just want to know what I want to know. And some of, some of this, once we look at it and understand it, it will basically give you a good outlook on morale, what causes morale to go up or to go down, or how I feel if, in fact, I'm a part of this and I get looked over, if I feel like I'm getting looked over, then I just think that this would be something we could look at as to how to boost morale.
Certainly. I, I'd be glad to produce the numbers, but I can assure you that there's no, um, consideration taken for race, sex, ethnicity, political background, affiliation, anything like that when I make transfers. It's in the best interest of the department, and it always will be.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for all the information you've already sent. I just, this would just kind of complete it. And whatever you sent me, you can send it to the rest of, including Councilman Bowman, if he, if he'll have time to-
But you don't have to, because he's at the barbecue.
Because he, he's going-
I'll get it to everybody.
Doing the barbecue deal, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilman Green.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns relative to property standards for Mr. Green?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Green, we've talked about, uh, property in my district at the corner of Forest and Gilbert, I think, that apparently is owned by HUD and is leased out. You mentioned to me that, uh, HUD doesn't always keep up the properties that it owns in our community like it should, and I just would ask you to pay particular attention to this property. And if you have a counterpart at HUD or somebody you have contact with, please have them make sure that they cut the grass on the rental properties they own in the city of Shreveport in a timely manner. Thank you.
Will do.
Just a quick question. If Councilman Bowman-
I don't know if you were finishing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the inspectors, and I could, I could act as offline too, but I just wanted to make sure that they, they are working and they are going up and down in the districts and checking. So when they write this stuff, these things up, stuff up, whatever, um, they send it, are they riding and writing and sending this stuff in to be taken care of?
You mean-
Are they riding up in the districts? Are they riding up the street, taking notes and sending it in from where they are? Do they have to come back to the-
No, from where they are.
Okay, okay.
They're wireless now.
That's it. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. He's looking at me like, what is she gonna ask me today? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll it, but does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Green while he's here? And thank you. You're good.
All right.
Next, um, revenue collection, implementation, that we all received what we're supposed to? I think we did. Um, not sure any bond forfeiture, so we didn't have that. Okay. There is no public hearing. Ms. Ewing, is there any table, any, no, any legislation to be added today?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have the following public comments. And, uh, when you come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please give your name and address, um, and then the clock will start on you for three minutes. First up is, um, Mr. Alonzo Sanders.
Alonzo Sanders, ten nineteen Pickett Street. Um, I want to address the council about a petition that I started to end the contract with the DDA. Um, there's been past allegations of racism, unequal pay, but me personally, I have experienced criminal misconduct from the executive director, Elizabeth Swain. And right now, I'm at a point to where I started a petition. I got about six hundred people to sign so far. I've read that the city council has the power to end these contracts, or the mayor. Um, and it seems to me that the problem may not be the DDA, that it may be Elizabeth Swain, but I'm asking that the city council do an investigation or either get someone to do an investigation, um, into the matter. One of the matters was June twenty-fifth, um, twenty-twenty, which made headlines on the news, as well as went viral on social media. Um, particularly in my case, I'm a concerned citizen about the things that's happened to me and just people, well, I'm not gonna say people, I'm gonna say Elizabeth Swain in the area who's controlling the downtown district. And that's basically all I wanted to say. I, I don't know how to present the petition, who would I give the petition to. I've emailed a few city councils. I haven't, um, got a response back. I, that's why I came in to speak today. And, um, I'm gonna send you some further information and paperwork that I have to present to you to maybe possibly get an investigation into this matter started or to end the contract with the DDA. I understand it's supposed to end twenty-twenty-seven, which it probably continues by then, but I think that, um, with the city councils representing the constituents of Shreveport, the citizens of Shreveport, that, um, we have to have equal opportunity within these organizations that are getting funded by the city and have the right people to represent that as well. And that's it.
Hold on one second, Mr. Sanders. I think that my colleague had a question, but did you email me? Because I usually see your-
No, I, you, you know, I didn't want to email you, to be honest with you.
No, you gave, you gave a hard time last time.
We went out for coffee. We're all good. Isn't that right, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, 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 we good. I, I got number love.
If you got a copy, if you got a copy of, of the information you have, can, can, can you give it to, uh, the clerk and she can make us a copy and we'll have it, please?
I want to say this, if I can. I, I gave everybody at the city council, um, back in March, the paperwork, but I'll make sure I do it again.
Please do.
And-
Please do.
We go for it.
You got a copy of your, um, petition as well?
Uh, I was gonna bring it in when I got thousands. I got about six hundred people in and I'm gonna get, I don't know, was it a certain number I had to reach? That's why I wanted to talk to, maybe the clerk would have that information, I don't know. But, um, it'll be no problem getting thousands of people.
Get that.
I just need to know what I need to do. All right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
We'll get a copy of it.
Mr. Tom Arseneau.
Tom Arseneau, six fifteen Jordan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh one. Uh, I'm also one of the owners of Montgomery Duplex, which is the appellant, uh, in a, an appeal from the MPC decision on a special use permit. I just want to stick to the facts today. The thing that I think is important for you to understand is that the MPC decision effectively says, we're gonna take a lot that faces on Crestwell, and we want to combine it with two lots that face on Jordan, and then grant us, uh, a special use permit to permit the building of a significantly sized parking lot when the current location has the right to simply re-stripe an existing cement parking lot and operate exactly where it is. Uh, the first proposal would have been to build a twenty-four-foot wide driveway, which is about the size of a small street from Crestwell to Jordan. Fortunately, Dr. Burnham changed that plan, but by wedding these two lots, you will affect the marketability of the lots on Jordan as well as the lot on Crestwell, because they'll be joined together, and the parking will be for the Crestwell property, although it'll be on the Jordan lots. We believe that that's not an appropriate use. When we, we met with Dr. Burnham and the MPC staff, we went back, my wife and I went back to look at the plan and to see what might be done. And frankly, when we looked at it, there were so many conditions that we thought needed to be met, that it became clear to us that it really was not a good plan, and Dr. Burnham does not need it. And so when you combine those two things, we believe the appropriate action for the council would be to overturn the MPC. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Since you, I did send you a lengthy email yesterday, and I apologize for it, but there were a lot of facts.
Can I explain the parking, the parking again to me now? You said it'd be on, on what, the parking is for who?
The parking is for the, the office building on Crestwell.
Right.
But the parking that's proposed would be on the lots that face Jordan Street, on the back of those lots. And the, the MPC gave approval with no, we did not oppose that application in two thousand eighteen. The MPC gave approval for the operation and then only required the re-stripping of the existing parking lot. That should provide, if you look at the, at the plan, that should provide about the same number of parking spaces that would be provided by the new plan, but it would take up a good bit of green space instead of the parking spaces that are already there. And so our, our thought is, it is much better to let Dr. Burnham use the existing parking lot, saving tens of thousands of dollars, rather than to create an additional parking lot that reconfigures the lot spacing in that area.
Is that new parking affecting your, your idea?
It, it will, it will, because of the nearness to the duplex that's there. We're hemmed in because the city closed the alley behind us. Uh, we are hemmed in there, uh, and it also will affect the marketability of that lot in the future. Should Dr. Burnham wish to sell it, or should her business not succeed, then someone would have to buy both of those pieces of property. And if they just bought the one on Jordan Street, then they would have to deal with parking for a bill, a commercial building that is on Crestwell. There, the, the, the plan that's shown on the site is to build a duplex on the front of those lots at Jordan.
Okay. It just, it- Is there, you have others who are opposing to this also?
Uh, well, my, my wife is here also, Jason Russell. Jason is here. Jason owns the lot directly to the east of the Jordan Street lots. He and his family have purchased that lot to restore it for their family home. We own the lots, we own the lot at five thirty-six Jordan that is across the street. A house that we have restored, actually, the house that my wife was born and raised in.
So have y'all talked to Dr. Burnham about this?
We have talked, we have talked to Dr. Burnham, and, like I say, when I, when I looked at all the conditions that I thought needed to be met to make that work, it became clear that it really was not, uh, was not a very good, a good plan, and it's not necessary for Dr. Burnham to operate her business. If it were, I would feel a little bit differently.
It's not necessary to you for her to operate. I'll be to that way now.
Well, let me, let me put it this way, uh, Mr. Bowman. I, I certainly appreciate that, but here is the issue. Um, we sent you, I sent you a photograph of people parking in that lot. Uh, the lot is significantly higher than the property on Jordan Street, and so for people to park in that lot that would be built, they have to ride down the hill, then they have to walk up the hill to Dr. Burnham's building. My suggestion to you is that's not going to happen. They're not going to park there. They're going to park on the existing pad that's there, regardless of what is there. So you would be putting Dr. Burnham to an enormous expense of money, changing the alignment of the lots for something that's not gonna get used.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Chief, Councilman Green?
Did I understand you say you were gonna be spending tens of, tens of thousands of dollars?
No, Dr. Burnham will have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to rebuild the driveway and to rebuild the parking lot, to build the parking lot.
And she don't mind doing that?
Apparently not.
Okay.
That's what she said.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I realize that the script left out the master plan committee report. Mr. Clark, can you do that after we finish public comment? Do you mind? Thank you. Mr. Jason Russell.
Hello, uh, Jason Russell. Uh, currently reside at ninety-six twenty-one Ferncliff, Annabethany. However, I have also recently purchased five thirty-three Jordan to, uh, restore that house and move my family to. So, uh, we, we bought this house, uh, with the intentions of restoring it, and, uh, the idea of two vacant lots right next door was appealing for, uh, possible future. Uh, the idea of a parking lot is not ideal, and, uh, like Mr. Arseneau said, that the, uh, the way the structure is gonna be set up, it's, um, it's, uh, it's gonna change the alignment of the way the street feels. Having a curb cut, um, you're gonna create a through street, uh, through the parking lot, cutting that corner off. Um, that's, I, I don't, he, he's pretty much summed up everything I, just to say, I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ken Craft. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ken Craft, one five seven Archer, Shreveport, seven one one zero five. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for mentioning the census. We're still working late, trying to get it done. Laura didn't help. In southwest Louisiana, that's part of the Shreveport office. Thirteen of the sixteen parishes declared a federal disaster area or in our area- And Southwest Louisiana, that's part of the Shreveport office. Thirteen of the sixteen parishes declared a federal disaster area or in our area. I'd like to speak, uh, public safety pay raise, but to answer a question from somebody Sunday at church, uh, in fact, Tom may have left, but then City Councilman District C, Councilman Tom Arseneau in eighty-three questioned the budget director, Michael Lofton, how much is this annexation gonna cost? Out of that came the fact sheet, the proverbial fact sheet. Uh, somebody asked me that, that's, that's been in existence about thirty-seven years. What does something cost, debits and credits? This is the twenty-first time I'm addressing this body on a need for a public safety pay raise. Uh, LOL generally means laughing out loud or lots of love, but to me, it means Lincoln on Lincoln, penny on a five, two tenths of a percent. When the council passed early last year, the May first nineteen sanitation tax at seven dollars a month, ninety-eight percent of Shreveporters lost on that. Only the two percent who spent thirty-five hundred a month come out ahead, thirty-five hundred or more. Everybody else, many people, don't even have an income a half or a third or a fifth of thirty-five hundred. The city needs to do something fairly soon. I would like to see whether you do the proverbial citizens committee or do it with a council subcommittee, public safety. But we could, we could propose a two tenths of a percent, or maybe a quarter of a percent, as Chief Wolverton mentioned two weeks ago, that would be enough for all city employees to get a raise, not just public safety. And public safety to me, my grandfather told me fire means forging inside, rescuing everyone. My grandfather told me police means, police officers live in challenging environments. The first letter spells police. They do. Let's do something for these heroes. Let's try to get together and either do a sales tax or something, and see if we could invest it in our police and fire departments and our other city employees. And Chief Wolverton said, because of Laura, I believe he, he mentioned that August, September, uh, no, it was August, August twenty-seventh, the busiest day for calls of service ever. You know, a firefighter cannot practice social distancing. In a ministry in CPR, a police officer cannot socially distance, arrest somebody. It's up close and personal for those people.
Mr. Craft.
Councilman Green, Mr. Craft.
Mr. Craft.
Mr. Craft, I, I am one hundred percent with you. Of course, and I don't know what committee, how we could do it, but in order for that to happen, the delegation will have to agree to put it on the ballot. So we need some strong people.
Correct.
That would talk to our delegation as to assisting us so that we could take care of our responsibility here. So it, I don't know if it would be in order to, for me to ask the council to let you be the chair of their committee to get some other people that could, uh, talk to delegation into.
I don't, I, I don't mind helping in any way I can. It's been.
Yes, sir.
A lifetime up here, forty-two years in Shreveport, and, uh, the sales tax, Mr. Green, uh, when it was a penny in the mid-eighties, it brought in twenty-one million dollars. Today it brings in forty-five million. The seven dollar fee still brings in seven dollars. The thirty-five dollar EMS fee is worth about eleven dollars from the time it was first proposed with inflation. Sales taxes are the only tax of which I'm aware of that, but a lot of folks from outside shop in Shreveport and spend money, so I would, I would be happy to serve on it, to cheer it. Uh, public safety work is so critical now. It hasn't gotten any easier with George Floyd, with Corona, with Laura. These men and women are hurting. Let's help them.
Thank you.
Dr. Burnham here. Um, I don't have a form for you, but I'm gonna call you up after the next, um, after we finish the next speaker so you can speak for yourself. Is that okay?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Grayson Butcher.
Uh, Mr. Craft, we had a public safety committee meeting on Thursday. Um, I will tell you this, uh, and I'm not speaking for other council members, but my, what I would like to see happen is a quarter sales, quarter cent sales tax. I think that that's a, an excellent idea, a good way to get raises for our employees. Um, I am also, uh, working with the police chief and fire chief to come up with a way to give our, our people at least a four percent raise by the end of the year, to show them, similar to what you had said, uh, at least to show that we're trying to do something. So, um, I, I, I think I agree with you to the extent that we need to probably have a citizens committee to gather if we do decide to do the quarter cent sales tax or whatever is decided to do, and I would like for you to serve on that as a chairman of the public safety committee. But I, I think we're, um, we're still a few steps away from that. Um, we have another meeting that's gonna be coming up pretty soon, but, but, but we are working in that direction to get, to get them a raise, and, and I agree with you. I've done that job, and it's something that, uh, needs to be recognized. We, we've fallen so far behind other cities our size. It's time to do it. So I appreciate you speaking every time, and I, I appreciate you talking to, uh, to everybody about it and, 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 you know, kind of giving us an insight. I know it makes the firefighters and police officers feel good to have a citizen that's pushing for them, so, thank you.
Well, there are many citizens who are for them. Give us the opportunity to help them, and we will go out and vote in April, and we will support them. It doesn't have to be sixty or seventy percent. It needs to be fifty percent plus one on a low turnout. The number of city employees and the number of policemen and firefighters and their families, almost in and of itself, is enough to carry this type of a ballot item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Anthony Michael. Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Department M one ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. How do you find a rabbit in a forest? Make a noise like a carrot. I want to thank everyone for the amount of money that they would, that they could give to help me out with giving to MDA for the year twenty twenty. My amount this year was one hundred eighty-five dollars for twenty twenty, and I'll look forward to giving them the money again next year in twenty twenty-one. I know it's a long ways off until that time, but I'm going to make it as I know everybody else will too. I hope everyone had a very great Labor Day because I did. Of course, I had to do laundry, which I didn't find thrilling at all. But the thing is, after I did that, I went to Strong's Eat Shop to get a bite to eat, coming home to watch Alice later on when they were fighting over money, and Mel said, "Half for me, half for you three." Flo said, "Mel, kiss my grits," as only she can say, "Kiss my grits." We have had for this year and others, living very, in, in very evil days such as Ephesians five fifteen through seventeen talks about. Be careful then how you live, not as unwise, but as wise, making the most of every opportunity because the days are evil. Therefore, don't be foolish, but understand what the Lord's will is. I guess the best thing that we can all do is just take things one step at a time, on a one day at a time deal, and make the best of what we can. I will look forward to hearing any good news today that's possible, and of course, I will continue giving to MDA because it's a very good cause. They've been very good to me, I've been very good to them, and the one hundred eighty-five dollars, I made sure that they got it.
Thank you, Sammy. Let's give Sammy a round of applause for for raising that money. Good job. I know it was different this year with COVID. You weren't able to reach out to people like you used to, like you usually do, but you did good.
Yeah, things have changed a bit.
Um, Dr. Burnham, is it okay if I bring her back, bring her up to speak about her, about this appeal? We technically still in public comment, so you have three minutes to give, um, just a, an informal presentation, whatever you need to tell us, and then we can ask you some questions.
All right, thank you. So, good afternoon, council, mayor. Um, I'm Dr. Burnham. I live at eleven oh eight Allen Park Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven zero five. I'm here to discuss, um, comments that Tom made about fifteen nineteen Crestwell, which is a building that I purchased for my organization. So there are a lot of different things that Tom brought up. One thing that he talked about was, um, you know, finances. No disrespect. It's not his business how much something, it's not his business about how much something will, will cost me, um, to put in the community. That's the first thing that I have an issue with. The second thing is, Tom, he does not have any parking at his duplex, all right? So as a result of that, he wants his tenants to park on my property, which is not fair to me or my business. The third thing is, all right, he talked about the property that I purchased on Jordan Street, all right? I'm not sure how long that property's been there, but I know it's been there at least twenty years. Nobody has done anything with that property. So I come in and purchase the property, not only to enhance a community that I'm not even from, but also to increase, um, some nice visibility of the community that I'm coming into to, to develop. Um, the building that I purchased, we plan on putting a mental health facility there. I'm in business. He talked about our failure. I'm a Christian. Not only am I a Christian, I'm a combat veteran, so I'm gonna win. There's no failure, okay? The, the land that I purchased is to put duplexes there. There's going to be, um, parking there no matter what. It's not left up to him to decide what I do with the property that I purchased. It's left up to you all to make the decision as well as the MPC. Okay? So, again, my goal was to come into a community to work with Tom. I mean, Tom, I purchased the property. He contacted me, wanted to know what I planned to do with the property, um, and who I was as a person, all right? Came in, met with him and his wife, who's here today, um, to try to work with these individuals. But since I've purchased that property, there's been an issue with me and what's been going, what I plan to do with the property that's been there for twenty years. So, all I'm asking is, is for your support. Uh, another thing, he mentioned about the current parking that's at the, the building. It's not adequate parking because we see clients where I'm currently at, and, and this business has been in, in, in business for over three years. So again, we're gonna succeed no matter what. However, we need additional parking because we have doctors, we have kids, we have adults that come in, and it's just not an adequate parking at this time. So, I'm here to ask for your support so I can move into this building, so I can continue with the current business that I have, which is very lucrative and very successful. And again, it's not his business how much it's gonna cost me to develop.
Dr. Burnham, your time has stopped, but we may have some questions for you.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Green.
Okay, cool.
Doctor, I, I'd just like to say, thank you for being a strong businesswoman. Uh, I, I just, I admire what you're doing, and, I mean, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Haley. Okay.
All right.
I. I looked at an email that I got from the director of the MPC suggesting that we could remand this back, but my question is, and it might be that, if I may ask, uh, the director of MPC to come up now and answer some questions, because I think where my question is now is, how long have you been trying to develop this property for your business?
I purchased the, the, the property, I believe, ever since twenty eighteen.
Eighteen.
How, okay, so the, the site plan that you have now for parking.
Yes.
Is to give you the minimum parking required by the Unified Development Code.
Yes.
And that is, that's by policy.
Yes.
The other issue became the width of the driveway from the city into traffic engineer. But you've determined that you would just like to comply with all of that and do what has been recommended and what has been approved by the MPC.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm just trying to follow the rules and learn this system because it's new to me, and make whatever accommodations to move this forward.
And you're, you've been transparent about your future plans as far as developing with the duplexes.
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing nefarious. You want to put in duplexes, that's what you're gonna do in addition, so you would still need that parking.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to, I asked Mr. Clark something? Okay, Mr. Clark. And I know that we're gonna be looking at this later and that it might have been, and I apologize if it would have been more appropriate just to take this as it falls in the agenda, but, um, my question is, the way that you all have oriented this, do you feel that it is not conforming with the configurations of the block of the neighborhood of whatever?
Could I just go back just a little bit, uh, Madam Chair?
And then when you're done, you can give your report that we didn't give.
Okay, I'll be just fine. Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Burnham came to the MPC, uh, and asked after the, uh, special use permit, uh, in twenty eighteen had lapsed. She had a hundred and eighty days to apply for a certificate of occupancy, and that didn't happen. So the special use permit lapsed, and, and that special use permit, uh, the site was to remain basically as it was. We were trying to ensure that she got into the site and, uh, got started in, in her process, uh, but that lapsed, and she came back, and when she came back, she came back asking for a way to, uh, acquire additional parking. Uh, it was not us forcing her to spend additional funds in order to, uh, obtain additional parking to, by the way, meet the requirements of the ordinance. I, I think that she was required to have nine parking spaces, and she had three at the time. But we deemed the, the site non-conforming and allowed her to open the site if she had gone through the process with the three parking spaces, which she felt were inadequate. Uh, and initially, she wanted to, uh, access that lot off of, uh, Jordan, uh, Avenue, I think it's Jordan Avenue, uh, maybe street. Uh, but, uh, she came in with a, an application in order to have a driveway to go to the back of her property that she had on Jordan, which was close proximity to the, uh, to the, uh, business complex at nineteen thirteen, uh, Crestwell. We came up with, uh, her engineering firm submitted a site plan, which we thought was, uh, in compliance with the, with the ordinance and would facilitate her exactly what she needed because her plans were, but without the special use approval could not happen, but her plans were to do a, a duplex, uh, on Jordan. And based on the duplex, we felt that the parking that was, uh, on the back of the lot would be blocked from public view on Jordan. One of the problems was that, uh, there was some concern about just a driveway on Jordan because she was not ready to do the duplex. So by her, by there being a, a problem with the driveway on Jordan, we started the process of, uh, having a meeting with her and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Arseneau to, to talk about the Crestwell entrance. And, uh, that's where we got to the, uh, engineering requiring, it's in the UDC, it's a part of the Unified Development Code, but engineering has shared with us because of a national standard that a in-and-out driveway, two-way driveway would require a minimum of twenty-two feet. Uh, the UDC requires twenty-four feet, and that's why we got to the point that we are at now, uh, was that there are eighteen feet, uh, in the existing driveway. We were trying to secure a, a servitude in order to gain the additional, uh, feet in order to make the driveway off of Crestwell because that was a, you know, objection, and we were, we were trying to promote, uh, a neighborhood participation and neighborhood involvement and businesses and neighborhood working together for the betterment of the community. Because there was inadequate space, it would require a servitude of passage. And, uh, that servitude would be from, I think, Mr. Arseneau's property and the DEF Action Center property, and that's where we sort of left it. If we could get that servitude of passage from there, we would deny the entrance from Crestwell. But, you know, if that doesn't work, there is nothing that prohibits her from applying for the access from her property. It's her property on Crestwell, but we just felt it would be a much better deal if we could make that process work.
Mr. Clark, um, I know that you said that an option was to remand it back, but how much more time is that gonna? but how much more time is that gonna add to her, in harm of her hardship potentially if we don't disvote on this today?
It would, we would have to go back to the process, would probably be a six-week process of, it also will have to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission to get their approval for the driveway and so forth.
I don't wanna do that, I wanna.
We're just trying to make this be a peaceful and cooperative agreement for her and the neighbors in the Highland area. And that's the only reason, Madam Chair, that, you know, if I offered the other option to the council to remand it back with instructions on
That's fine, Mr. Clark.
what the MPC should do.
Okay, I think we know what we need to know, and I apologize for getting out of order on that and on the agenda for today. Do you have a master plan committee report first?
I'll make that extremely short. As you are very aware, there is a Master Plan Advisory Committee meeting planned via Zoom on Friday from 12:00 to 1:30. We were impacted by COVID-19. We generally would have been trying to do multiple things, starting in January 1. We did have a meeting in January 1, if I remember, January 2020. But after that, and with the event of COVID, we have not had another meeting, and we are already into September. So, we think that we have a quorum. The wonderful thing, as you well know about the Master Plan Advisory Committee because it's time for city, parish, and MPC to come in a united force in order to promote development and orderly development and growth in the Shreveport-Caddo Parish area. That will give us representatives from the city council, the parish commission, and the MPC board to come up with ideas on how we can better strengthen master plan type activities. We also have many recommendations that the consultants made. We're in 2020 of a 2030 master plan. We have reviewed all of the recommendations that were made for the city and all of the recommendations that were made for the parish. And we are going through the process of reaching out to city departments and parish departments. And both entities have been extremely supportive and extremely helpful. There are some things that the master plan consultants recommended that did not happen. And they did not just happen from oversight. They did not happen because professionals locally did not agree with the recommendations and did not utilize the information from the consultants. Now, we're going back to them and saying, and asking, you did not agree with this, so therefore, what would you do to address these issues that were cited in, not necessarily cited, but identified in the master plan development? We are also exploring the Metropolitan Planning Commission planning area. As you all know, the planning area is the entire city limits of the city of Shreveport and those environs beyond the city up to five miles. And we're looking at them very carefully. We're looking at the municipalities that are part of those, that area, that would be Greenwood and Blanchard, to make, to try to come up with a holistic approach to planning and zoning and development throughout the planning limits. Our sister, that I'll close, Madam Chair, I've lied to you, I've not been extremely short. But our sister city and sister parish, Bowger, has a similar approach. They were both enacted in 1954. Bowger had the idea of making planning limits for the city of Bowger, the city of Benton, and the city of Holden. We wanted to do it a different way in that we wanted to make the, work very closely with the towns, the city of Greenwood and the city of Blanchard, but ensure that those areas outside of those cities were under the direction of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. It would be just one Metropolitan Planning Commission instead of three. And that's basically where you all will be coming in and looking at these recommendations and making those type recommendations to us, to the MPC board.
I'm not touching that today.
I did not hear you, Madam Chair.
If I'm absorbing everything you just said, I'm not touching that today. Councilman Green?
Mr. Clark, have you had any more requests for food trucks lately?
Not since I shut yours down, Councilman Green.
That's all I wanna know.
Y'all are spicy today. Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Clark?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you so much.
Let's get back in order, y'all. I apologize for losing track of my script. We have the following executive appointments to be considered today. Permit and inspection chief building official, Michael Sepulveda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
So, a motion from Councilman Green and a second from Councilman Bowman. I call for the vote. That might have been Butcher and Bowman at the same time. I saw his hand.
I'll take it.
And that passes unanimously. Let's continue. We also have superintendent of streets and drainage,
So moved.
Dex Morgan. That's gonna be a motion from Councilman Bowman and a second from Councilman Butcher. I call for the vote. And if y'all are looking at the screen, I'm showing up as Flurry today, but it's actually me. And that passes. Congratulations to both of you. There are no items under consent agenda. Ms. Ewing, will you please proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution 100, amending the pay schedule for the municipal police civil service personnel.
I would like to table this legislation today.
Second.
And that's a second from Councilman Green. I don't even think we need to discuss it. Councilman, okay. Councilman Butcher mentioned that there is gonna be another meeting, and we're gonna see what we can get together on. So, and we'll come back after that, hopefully. Call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 105, amending and restating Resolution Number 90 of 2020, making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of the incurring of debt in issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, not to exceed $35 million revenue bond series 2020.
So moved.
So, a motion from Councilman Green, second from Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Call for the vote. That fails 3-3. Let's continue.
Resolution 106, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between Caddo Parish 911 Communications District Number 1 in the city of Shreveport relative to non-public safety agencies.
So moved.
Second.
So, a motion from Councilman Butcher, a second from Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Butcher.
I would like to recognize our distinguished 911 director who is hiding back there in the back. She's here if anybody has any questions. Thank you, Ms. Carter. That's it.
Wait, is this the one where, remind me what this is doing?
Basically, allowing non-public safety to get on the 911 system, the radio, the new radio system.
Awesome, all right. Let's call for the vote. That passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 107, authorizing BBA Properties LLC, represented by Bill Andrews at Lot 1, Deuceby Subdivision, to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system.
So moved.
So, a motion from Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Second from Councilman Green. Any discussion? We did get a question by email about why to, why we're letting this onto the water. Who's district?
It's mine. Actually, that line that runs down there is that port line that we discussed on numerous occasions, that it was put in by rural development loans, and it's off of the port. And it's right in front of this property. It runs right in front of the property.
Is that satisfactory to our emailer, who happens to be here? Okay, thank you. I call for the vote. I don't know if I remembered everything I got emailed, but I do remember that one. And that passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 108, establishing a deadline to change the frequency of city employee payroll to biweekly from semi-monthly.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Nicholson. In the discussion, Councilman Bowman?
Yeah, now make me understand why we're doing this.
Councilman Nicholson?
Councilman Bowman, the GFOA at the mayor's request, conducted a study of the finance department. The report that the GFOA issued in July of this year indicated that transitioning from semi-monthly to biweekly payroll would have a significant positive impact on the city as an organization. I conferred with Ms. Jones about the timeline that the city would need to complete that transition. She indicated to me that the transition could be completed by the end of 2021, which is about 16 months from now. And so, this legislation will set a deadline, just to keep us all on track, to make sure that that transition occurs by that date.
So, if it didn't happen in that time, then what?
Well, we are, if this legislation passes, the council is requiring that after that date, payroll be biweekly. Presumably, if for some reason we could not meet that deadline, the administration would turn to the council and ask for an extension of the deadline.
Can Ms. Jones or Mr. Casey give me some facts, some fact proof on that, please?
We agree that this is something that would be helpful, you know, to the city. And we do need enough time to make sure that we do it appropriately because it does affect employees' budgets. So, I think that the end of 2021 is, should be enough time. We've already started to step through that process. If for some reason that we think that we won't meet that timeline, we'll let, you know, the council know, you know, in advance to be able to make some adjustments and to set another timeline. But this is definitely something that needs to happen. We just wanna make sure that we do it, you know, properly.
I guess I'm just stuck on why we putting the timeline or timeframe on.
Councilman, I understand from the GFOA's reported from discussing the question with city staff that this transition has been something that members of the finance department have recognized for a long time needed to happen, that there was support within that department for the transition. But for whatever reason, there has not been a top-level focus on the issue.
Well, we know why because of who was leading the place, so we got different leadership there now, so.
I did discuss the timeline proposed by the resolution with the administration, and I set in this legislation the deadline that the administration proposed. So, I think this is a way to focus attention on the discrete change that the GFOA has recommended. I'm not trying to force the administration to do it any more rapidly than it thinks that it can. And so, I think this legislation is in order and a good thing for the city.
So, Councilman, you're saying you're being a team player, not micromanaging?
Because it sound like you're micromanaging, but if you're being a team player and you can go on a record and say a team player, I'd understand that better.
Councilman Green?
Mr. Mayor, what's your comment on that?
Yeah, I'll echo what the CFO said. I mean, we have new leadership in that department. That's the reason why you all voted for a new CFO. I trust Rick to implement the GFOA recommendations in a reasonable timeline. She had a conversation with Councilman Nicholson, and that's the timeline that they both agreed upon. But I will say, you know, I will caution that I hope that we don't put her and our department under the gun on other recommendations. There were a lot of recommendations. We all agree that we had to fix some things in the finance department on many more recommendations. I just don't wanna overwhelm the department as they're coming into theirself with their new leadership.
So, what is the ending date? What is the, what is the date?
The transition date required by this legislation is the end of 2021, so that's 16 months away.
Okay, so that's the enough time for you all?
That would be, I would say, the soonest.
Okay.
That date would require us to put, you know, a team together that would have to focus on that. You know, that is a date that I want to get it done. And we, you know, we can get to that point. You know, we can reach out to our vendor to see if we can get some assistance. I definitely know that that's going to be required. We will need some help.
So, my concern then becomes if 2021 is, if it's not met within that time, are there going to be penalties or something for that? Or are we giving ourselves enough wiggle room? What would be the best time? How long do you think this process?
I would prefer not to put a timeline on it. I mean, that would be my preference, is not to, you know, because we could get it done, you know, sooner. It may take a little bit longer. You know, there are a number of items on that GFOA list that we have been working on, and it's not going to all happen, you know, overnight. It's going to take some time. This is a priority for us, and we wanna get it done as soon as possible. I don't prefer the timeline, but if we have to be under a timeline to push, you know, that would, I would say that would be the soonest we could get it done.
Councilman Nicholson, do you think that then we could remove the timeline? And she would know the anticipated date, that she would have to do that so they won't, you know, pressure themselves in that way, since we know that it's a matter of importance? But still, to give her that department, that wiggle room that they need?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was there a caveat in here, giving the opportunities in writing for the extensions? And any sort of procedure for that?
Councilman Taylor, I'll say first in response to your question. I wanted to make sure that this legislation both prioritized making this transition because the GFOA report indicated that this change should be a priority and would have a significant positive impact on the city. And I also did not want to attempt to unilaterally oppose a deadline on the finance department that it could not meet. And so, for that reason, I reached out to Ms. Jones, and we discussed by email how much time the finance department would need. And the date of 12/31/2021 is the date that she proposed. It's not a date that we negotiated or that I pressured anyone to accept. We, the council is the, we're the governing authority of the city. We received a report from a third-party agency indicating that this change should be made. My preference as a member of the council is to set what I believe is a reasonable deadline for that transition and to allow the administration to come back to us in 2021 if for some reason it cannot meet the deadline. If the majority of the council prefers to set no deadline, then the appropriate vote is to vote the legislation down. And to answer your question, Madam Chair, the legislation itself is not providing mechanism for extending the deadline, but of course, the council by resolution would be able to extend the deadline at the administration's request and presumably with some explanation as to why it took more than 16 months to make this transition if we get to that point.
Is it a logical compromise to postpone this and see if there's a mechanism that we could put in play that might satisfy everybody?
I'd rather just vote it down.
If we'd like to postpone this and discuss it at the next meeting, I'm happy to do that. I'll move to postpone.
Is that a second, Councilman Green?
Madam Chair.
Council, I'm sorry, Mr. Cia or Whitehorn?
I'd also like to add that the IT department has a big piece in this as well. And I know that Mr. Hanson had mentioned a little bit of concern about that date. And I don't know if we've actually worked that out between the finance department and IT on what their piece is gonna be. But they were a little concerned that we may be pressuring them a little bit too.
If I may add, that's a good point because we will be heavily relied on IT because this transition is going to require someone to manually change each employee's record, 3,000 employees' records, one by one. And before we start that process, we need to make sure that the steps to do that are very well documented, that employees are trained appropriately to do that, that we have a mechanism in place to make sure that we can monitor employees making that change and to go back and make sure that it's right. We will be heavily relied on IT and also HR to provide communications to employees to let them know that this change is coming because it would require employees to adjust their budgets where they would be expecting a certain paycheck semi-monthly. It would change the amount that they're bringing home every pay period. So, they would need to be prepared well in advance. We wanna make sure that we give them resources to make sure that they have all the tools that they need to be prepared. So, it's not something that we want to do in a rush order because it requires so many people, it requires so many people to take their time and do it properly.
I have an open motion to postpone with no second.
Okay, go on.
I'll second.
Second from Butcher. More discussion from Councilman Green.
Ms. Jones, would that bother my check?
It would affect all employees of the state semi-monthly. Yes, sir. We would have to make sure you're properly informed.
Due to the fact that I got to pay my tax, I need to change my vote. My tax is biweekly.
I'll just say, I don't have.
Need to rethink possibility.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I don't have a problem with legislative guardrails that give us buy-in on the process by what point us to make sure that we measure twice and cut once if we're going to try to do something like this. I'll call for the votes to postpone.
I still have something to speak.
Councilman Bowman.
I had to say this, and I get it on both ends. But we know of the issues that we've had in that department in the past. And based on we have new leadership and that we're trying to get that department to where it should be functioning as it should be, I just don't see us micromanaging this as the way we're going about it. Now, if we want to come back and look at it in six months to the end of this year and see what the path they're on then, I can see that and I agree with that. But just to outright set a date for them right now when they're doing other, trying to get to where they need to be, I don't agree with that. And we've had other agencies or other reports from other people saying that we needed to do other things and we didn't do it. We just voted down on 35 million that we should have been trying to get, that we said no to. And we got reports about that as well, but we said no to that. So again, you can call for the vote. I'm asking my colleagues to vote no along with me. Thank you.
So this is to postpone. You can vote up or down on postpone, and we go back to the original if you vote this one down.
So you do what now?
So this is a motion to postpone. So if you vote yes, we'll pull this.
So Mr. Bowman is saying vote no on postpone.
He doesn't want to postpone. He wants to, he wants it to go away.
He wants it to die today, Councilman Green.
I want it to die today, Councilman Green, just like that.
So you did vote no.
And I want it to die another day, like James Bond. Are we voting?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that fails. So now this is back to the original motion to, so.
Move to adopt.
To adopt.
And I'm asking my colleagues to vote no with me again.
And yes is to adopt the legislation.
Okay, that feels outright. Okay, let's continue.
Resolution 109, recognizing Shreveport Bosher African-American Chamber of Commerce and its work as being a premier voice in Northwest Louisiana for the growth of African-American businesses and to declare September a Shreveport Bosher Black Business Month.
I second if Councilwoman Taylor moves.
It's a motion from Councilwoman Taylor and a second from Councilman Bowman. I call for the vote. And that's unanimous. Let's continue.
Resolution 110, authorizing the mayor to dedicate 4140 Greenwood Road at Marion Street in Greenwood in honor of the late Pastor Wilbur Dawson, Sr., and to otherwise provide with respect there, too.
So move.
Some motion from Councilman Bowman, a second from Councilman Green. Any discussion, anything you want to say?
No, I just want to say that Rem Dawson has been real strong in that community, and he's been on that corner for about five years. He's passed at other places before, but he's been there going on five years, and he's been real active in helping keep that street and that area cleaned up. And it's just an old-time religion in that church, and I've enjoyed him being there. So I think this is fortright for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Resolution 111, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bowman. Do y'all want to give a review for the public that might have missed the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Butcher.
Basically, which is a problem with a lot of our alcohol ordinances, they don't match up with what the state has. And several, about a month ago, the governor allowed some bars to have temporary license to have restaurants. We did not have that ordinance. I think it was 13 bars in town applied with the state and were approved for a temporary restaurant license. But we did not have that in our ordinance. So what we're doing is suspending that where legally these bars can operate underneath the state's order. So this is just basically mirroring what the state does and allowing these bars that do have kitchens, it's not, they're not just serving cold sandwiches. I mean, they're serving food to be able to, to be able to open up. So that's basically what this is. And it's for 90 days.
Thank you, Councilman Butcher. Very succinct. Good job. Call for the vote. That passes unanimously. Let's, that was the last of those. Let's move on. Ms. Ewing, will you please proceed with the introduction of resolutions?
Resolution 112, a resolution for the certification of compliance with the State of Louisiana Off-System Bridge Replacement Program. Resolution 113, accepting a donation valued at $15,038 from the Faith Flight Finnish Foundation to the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution 114, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana State University Health Sciences Center at Shreveport. Resolution 115, a resolution ratifying the acceptance of a donation of protective equipment to the city of Shreveport from Brother's, Brother Foundation to be used by the city of Shreveport, Louisiana.
Just need a motion, a second.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Nicholson, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. We don't vote on that one, though. We can continue with the introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance 117, an ordinance amending the 2020 general fund budget, appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordinance 118, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Ordinance 119, amending the 2020 solid waste enterprise fund budget.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green, second from Councilwoman Taylor. Ms. Ewing, will you please proceed with the ordinances on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 104, amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 3 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to poles and wires.
Madam Chair, I'm still awaiting input from industry, and for that reason, I move to postpone.
Second.
It's a motion to postpone from Councilman Nicholson, a second from Councilman Green. Call for the vote. It passes unanimously. Let's continue.
Ordinance 109, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport by amending Division 9, Article 5 of Chapter 26 relative to the Street Special Revenue Fund.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green, second from Councilman Bowman.
Madam Chair, I'll just point out for our colleagues that this would change the designation of money going to the Street Special Revenue Fund. And so a vote against this legislation would be consistent with a vote against the previous ordinance concerning the $35 billion operating line of credit. So I asked my colleague to vote no.
So can, I'm sorry, you repeat that one more time?
Yes, ma'am. We, the council split 3-3 on previous legislation during this meeting concerning whether the terms on which the city should borrow or open a $35 million line of credit to pay current operating expenses. This is companion legislation, and so presumably if you voted yes on the previous legislation, you would vote yes on this. And if a member voted no, for consistency here, she would vote no.
Any other discussion? I call for the vote.
I guess I got confused on what it was just.
Basically, this is funding the bond, the $35 million.
You voted yes, so this time you would vote yes, do you?
No, that's where you're wrong, Mr. Yeah, you're right.
You voted yes, so you'd vote yes, do you?
Okay. Did everyone vote? All right, so that fails. Let's continue.
Ordinance 110, amending the 2020 general fund budget.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Which one is this, ma'am?
We're on 110.
So this is, this is just general revenue bonds for the water and sewer, right?
We're on.
We just voted on 110, correct?
We're on 110. That's general fund budget, right? Okay.
That's the 110, right?
Gaslighting me, Chair. Got me thinking of.
I'm looking at 11, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was looking at 11, too.
Yeah, okay, when you was Butcher. No, I got you sorted out, then he started out. All right, that passes unanimously. Let's continue. 111.
Ordinance 111, amending the 2020 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I guess we should, for the sake of, I'm sorry, Clerk Ewing, would you tell us what we just voted on for the public?
Ordinance 111. This one, it adjusted funds in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. It redistributed funding in the Department of Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for disbursement of funds for the settlement of sales tax and average winter consumption rounding lawsuits.
All right, thank you. I don't know if anybody heard it, but it's on the record now. All right, let's continue.
Ordinance 112, a series ordinance pursuant to the General Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $50 million of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds in one or more series of the city of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the General Bond Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in the preparation and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the purchase and subscription for certain escrow securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents, and authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman. Any discussion?
So Mr. Washington walked his way. I don't know if he had something.
Did anyone have any questions?
I don't know if he had something he wanted to elaborate on this. I saw him head that way.
Hello, Mr. Washington.
Good afternoon, Council, Administration. I just wanted to say one thing. I know the vote for the 35 million went kind of quick, and that y'all voted to vote that down. So I just wanted us to be clear what's taking place. The administration had a strategy to help out with the revenue shortfall due to COVID. And that strategy was a two-tier strategy. One, take out a note for 35 million just in case toward the end of the year, property taxes don't come in right, revenue continue to go down, a COVID adversely affected the city of Shreveport. They would have their $35 million in their bag to be able to use to take care of the citizens, whatever revenue they fall short on. Now, the second part of this strategy is let's defer some payments based on this ordinance here. So a vote no is saying you didn't want the loan, and two, you didn't want to defer the payments. And that's all the tricks the administration had. So whatever vote y'all do, that's fine with me. But I want to make sure we're crystal clear on what we're doing. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'll just note for the record that based on the most recent numbers the council has received from the administration, the city has experienced no sales tax revenue shortfall, nor has it experienced any property tax collection shortfall to date. It's also the case that early this year, at the administration's prudent suggestion, we cut more than $10 million from the general fund operating budget. And so for all the reasons that I had previously expressed, I thought it was not prudent or sensible for the city to open a $35 million line of credit to pay current operating expenses. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Green.
Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, I don't, it would get in y'all business down there. I just know that where my place is. But I would ask that whatever failed today that you all would put it back on here real fast. And I just believe somewhere down the line we'll get it passed. And I'm just saying, I'm just talking about what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Councilman. And I want the CFO to kind of elaborate on what Attorney Washington just said, and then I'll make some comments afterwards.
Yeah, I, so I've, you know, in speaking with, you know, the administration, of course, we recognize that we are still in the middle of a pandemic. We are fortunate that at this point, you know, sales taxes have not been as bad as it could have been. And I know that has a lot to do with, you know, the additional unemployment receipts that, you know, people have been fortunate to be able to receive. We don't know the future of that. We don't know the future of revenue. We do have also, you know, the months where the casinos were closed. We have right now where even those, the months that the casinos have been opened, that their revenue that they've been taking in has been half of what it had been in the prior year. So there is some exposure to the city, even in a situation that we, you know, if we were not in the middle of a pandemic, municipalities usually have a fallback. They have some sort of mechanism, and this is something that, you know, the 35 million, for example, should have been something of some sorts that should have been in place for the city of Shreveport regardless, especially in terms of a pandemic. So, you know, having the 50 million, you know, option to be able to defer water and sewer is the largest fund of the city. It is our largest revenue generator. We would like to be able to have that option to be able to, you know, make sure that we have some security in case there's some additional shortfalls there as well.
And the thing that I want to add, the CFO just touched on one of the like exogenous factors of the fact that our receipts have been up because there was a federal unemployment, a UI, that was given to citizens during the CARES Act. Well, we know that UI has since expired, so our receipts will likely correlate with that expiration and start to go down. And I mean, just overall, we don't know what's going to happen for the remainder of 2020. I reminded us, I believe it was the last council meeting, that when we came in, we inherited a budget of negative $1.2 million. Negative $1.2 million in the operating budget. We were not fiscally healthy whatsoever. Last year, through being prudent and, you know, our IT department and all the other departments being very mindful of the dollars that they were spending, we were able to get that back up to a surplus. But it's not a surplus, even half of which that could have accounted for the budgetary shortfalls this year. The strategy that we put forward was the best that we can come up with. And you all have looked at me multiple times in multiple council meetings and said, hey, Mayor, can you figure this out with money? Hey, Mayor, can you figure this out with money? So when we put things up and they get shot down, we can't figure it out. So I am going to put this back up as Councilman Green recommended. I will talk to each and every one of you about, you know, what issues you have with it thus far. And I hope that we can get this executed to give the city some much-needed cushion, because we do not know what's going to happen throughout the remainder of this pandemic.
What's the timeline on this? Like, what's the deadline for y'all to submit this?
Well, and I don't know the financial advisors here, in case I'm wrong on the timeline. We had a projected date to close, and I think that was approaching. So we were, you know, we're very close on that deadline. So we would have to go back to the bank and basically ask for grace. They have, we've been pushing it. So we would have to go back again and ask for them to work with us. I think you can address.
Good afternoon. Pam Mobley, city's financial advisor. Your question about the date, we are trying our best to get this done before the election. And reason being is we don't know what's going to happen with the markets. I don't know if you follow, you know, the things that happened over the last weekend, but they've all been, you know, kind of contemplating if the government shuts down. Government shuts down, big bank shuts down, everything kind of goes haywire. We are trying to avoid being in the market the first week of November. With that being said, in order to defer the payments, we need to have that deferred. With that being said, in order to defer the payments, we need to have that deferred by, I think it was November the 5th, or it's a moot point because the payments would have been gone through the bank. So we are right now contemplating, if all goes well, pricing the first week of October and closing by the end of October. Again, so everything's out of the way before the election.
So even if we delayed this, if we delayed this two weeks, we'd still be okay on the window, but it'd be better if we just deal with it today?
Well, we still have rating presentations we have to do. We still have to get the investors lined up. This is not easy. I am not going to stand here and lie to you guys today. You know, letting the 35 go away, the first question from the ratings is going to be, what's your fallback plan? We don't have one. So I don't know how to answer that question other than our hands are tied. And we literally have a 30-day window after, I think it's September 17th is the date of the bond commission meeting. From there, our clock really starts ticking. And so your next meeting is after that, which is why we're trying to come before.
So here's your issue. While deferring the payments, it's going to end up costing us more in the long run in the future. Is there ever an opportunity to re-up?
Yep.
Can you explain how that works?
So what we have on the bonds, essentially, every time you do a bond deal, you do what we call a call feature. And it's essentially a 10-year call feature. So the bonds that were issued in, let's call it 2018, will be callable in 2028. These bonds that we're pushing back, they still have their call feature there because we're issuing them on a taxable basis. And I know this is a bit much from a public finance standpoint, but we're seeing that you're not giving up your, your call feature, if you will. So any bonds that we issue, and we can actually put a shorter call on these if we would like, although you pay a little bit of a penalty, maybe about five basis points, but there is an option in the future to redo these.
Okay, I think that's my questions. Thank you.
Can I add one thing on the note? I also want to point out, things that the city put in place when you got, when you went through COVID, you know, deferring, not deferring, the $10 million that you were able to replace and things of nature, you've done all that. There is nothing else left for us to do. And I am, I'm saying this because we have scraped the barrel to find investors for the note that now may go away. We are pushing up against investors on this water refinancing. And I remember when I started working for the city back in 2015, you did a competitive bond sale where you got two investors, two. We've taken that from two to now when we bring a bond deal, we get 10x oversubscription on your bonds, which is great. But if we do not put things in place to keep that going, we're going to go back to not being competitive in a marketplace. And that's not a place you want to be. But you still have a consent decree to do. This is essentially our back, our emergency plan. And like, you know, Alex said, I mean, we had a strategy and we did the best we could with what we had to work with. So yes, ma'am.
I think for the most part, I'm going to take this back to the flood of 2016. And when Governor Bobby Jindal came down, he said, you prepare for the worst and hope for the best. So I think that's exactly what they were doing, what the city is doing, is preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. But if we never had to use this, this is good, but at least that we have something in place. So I ask council members to go back and reconsider this when this comes back up on my agenda.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Green.
No, that's Chief Boyne.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chief.
I do have one question for Ms. Mosley, if I can ask. Is there a deadline on the 35 million? Are we pushing close on that as well?
We are. We can go back to Regents and C. I'm sure you could correct me if I'm wrong. I want to say that Mike told us, the banker at Regents, we had, I wanted it to the end of October on that as well because that one is not necessarily a bond deal, so to speak, but it's just been aligned. We just have to sign documents. But if, you know, were to be shot down today, then Alex can speak to this, I don't know what's going to happen to State Bond Commission because we have to wait now 30 more days to go back on their calendar. So that's pushing us up against that October deadline.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I, not to you. I just wanted to make a statement. Thank you. I just like to say that, and I'm not trying to poke cold water. But some time ago, we had a bond proposal that was up. And we could have had our money for streets, fire department, police department, could have had everything. Wouldn't have cost us a dime. And we didn't know that COVID-19 was coming. So now COVID-19 has come. It's here. We don't know when it's going to leave. The way people are acting, it's going to get worse. After this is over, something else. We didn't know these two hurricanes was going to come at the same time. And so now we need to give our public safety folk, we need to give our city a raise. And we don't have any money, but if we had just voted for the bond proposal, we would have still been able to operate. And sometimes we do what we do, but we need to think it out before because we know where we are today, but we don't know where we're going to be tomorrow. And I just rather, it's like a spare tire. I don't have a spare tire because I want to have a flat, but I have a spare tire just in case I have a flat. This is the just in case. And I don't know, attorney, if we could reconsider this and go back today to reconsider. It's not saying that they just going to get the money and go spend it. It still has to come back to the council. So since we oversee everything and we have the wherewithal to say, well, you can't do this or whatever, then I just think that we need to, now that we've heard what the folks said, this was their plan. If, if we had come to a point and then we needed the money, and then we'd be looking to the mayor to say, Mr. Mayor, well, why didn't y'all do something? But anyway, I just want to just say to the attorney, what's the rule to go back and reconsider this today? Or would we have to wait two weeks? And I would just ask that, somebody's heartbeat, this is for our city. This is, they said, look, we don't have another game plan. Once this one is over today, we don't know if Regents will allow us to borrow that line of credit again. So I, I just think that we ought to dig deep and say, you know, maybe we need to think this out before we move from this point. And that's what I got to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Green.
Madam Chair, I just, I just think if, if you would, you, you running this deal today, if you would go back and revote it, sure would help us out because I just think this is our city. This is all we got. I mean, so why put our city in jeopardy when it only takes one flash of a vote? Even still, we still have the authority whenever this come back to say, yeah or nay. But the better to have it than to need it, and to need it and don't have it.
Councilman Bowman.
Councilman Green, I appreciate your comments, what you just said, but everything you said, we stated that already. So I, and I appreciate you asking that and appreciate you saying what you said, but this is nothing that then I want to correct Attorney Washington also. Washington said that y'all voted down. It wasn't y'all, it was somebody else because Jerry Bowman did not vote that down. Let me get that straight first, put on the record on that. Y'all go kill the city playing games. Let me tell you that. You go kill it. You know it's something that needs to be done. You can hold your mic and wait till I finish speaking. You can, you can play games and kill the city if you want to, but it is more a state right now than what we're looking at. I don't know how y'all run your household. I don't, I don't spend every dime I get as soon as I get it. I'm not rich and have my money sitting up just in case. I plan for the future. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here to take care of our citizens, not just as, I don't look at, when I raised my right hand that day, two times. I raised my hand for the city of Shreveport, not for District G, not just for District A, for District, I raised it for the city of Shreveport. And I want to see this city do well. And right now, somebody trying to kill it and you're wrong for what you're doing, you'll have to deal with that, not me. I'm going to do what's right and I'm going to continue to vote that way, but you knew what this, Councilman Green, they knew what this was before we voted. Playing games is not the time right now. No, we didn't know COVID was coming. No, we did not. I'd rather have my money sitting to the side to take care of this city and the needs because people going to be calling for some service or something. And guess what? We ain't going to be able to do it. They calling now and we can't do it. So to play those political games today, I wouldn't, I'm not here for that. I'm not going to do it today. I didn't appreciate it, and that's fine. If that's the way we go go with that and it's done, we can bring it. Mayor, I'm begging you and your administration to bring it back. And if it goes down again, then the city of Shreveport would know on our districts. Who wants to see this city succeed and who wants to see it fail?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Nicholson has it.
Madam Chair, one of our colleagues has suggested that I am playing games and that I want to see this.
I didn't call no names, Councilwoman.
I have the floor. Councilman Bowman, nothing could be further from the truth. I think rhetoric of that nature is unfortunate and tiresome after almost 20 months of service together.
A hurt dog, a holler.
Can you, can you give me the floor, Councilman, or no? Thank you. I've made clear for months that I oppose this legislation, and it has nothing to do with politics. It has everything to do with the fact that this city has, to my knowledge and to the knowledge of our former clerk of council with whom I discussed it, has never borrowed large sums of money with the intention of paying them back over a long period of time for current operating expenses. That's never happened. And it's not responsible or the right thing to do to open up a $35 million line of credit, borrow money to pay today's bills, and then require future councils or future mayors or future citizens and taxpayers to pay that money back. If we get to the point that we don't have the money, we need to pay current expenses from current revenues, then we need to do one of two things. We need to either cut our expenses with a corresponding reduction in services or we need to impose additional revenue on taxpayers. We should not borrow money to pay current operating expenses with the intention of paying it back over a 10-year period. Three of members of the council agreed with that position today, three disagreed. I don't question anybody's good faith. I don't think anybody wants the city to fail. I don't think anybody else is playing games. And I hope that when we had differences of opinion, we can do so respectfully and move forward to the next issue. That's how this ought to work. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Councilman Bowman.
How it ought to work is not how it's been working. And if I feel like somebody playing games or if I feel like somebody is doing one thing or the other, guess what? I'm going to say it. I'm going to walk out here and shake your hand and pat you on the back like I do every councilman, but I'm going to call it like I see it. You got a fiduciary responsibility to take care of this city. And to sit something aside just in case of emergency, sounds smart to me. And if you're playing games, then you're playing games. If you're not, then you're not. I call it like I see it. Y'all know me. I don't bite my tongue about nothing like that. Y'all can move on, call for the vote, bring it back, do whatever you need to do. I spoke and said what I had to say.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Green.
In my lifetime, this is the first time we've been in a pandemic that we don't know which way it's going. And possibly, in fact, possibly the former clerk said, we've never done it before. We've never had this before. And times change. The message remain the same, but the method will change and has changed. And I just take everything serious because you got, for an instance, I asked Gary Norman, I said, Gary, when are we going to pick up all this debris? In front of my house, a big tree fell. It stuff is piled up. He said, well, Councilman, I got to ask the CO, CIO to get some overtime that we can get people to working on Saturdays or every other Saturday because we just behind and we, we can't do it during the regular week. We need overtime. We need, like I say, we don't know when another storm, tornado, hurricane, whatever is coming. But something else is coming after this. And I, I read a scripture the other day. It said, consider the ant thy slugger. Consider her ways. What it was saying, the ant is very wise. Ant work all summer long preparing for winter. And when winter come, ant has everything it needs. I preached a revival last week on the four seasons. And we are in a bad season right now in our city. Little children, they can recognize it. People asking, what are we going to do? Where's the oak? I tell them, we, I mean, people call me about the rays and firefighters and police officers and all the citizens about, what about the rays? Well, we don't have any money. Well, what are y'all going to do? Hope and pray. And I just think that, you know, Councilman Butcher, we always had understanding, man, I, I mean, I admire you for your heart. And I don't know, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but man, I just, I just think for the just in case, I just think that we as a council, we are the ones, we, we are the ones that's over, whatever. We have a strong mayor, former government. That simply means that four council members are not as strong as one mayor, that he has veto power. I think when it comes to this city moving forward and surviving, we have the vote. And I just think that, Councilman, if you could just search your heart and say, okay, man, as long as we have the jurisdiction over this money for the just in case, if we don't need it, then it go back. I mean, we done. We don't have to spend it, but nobody knows. Nobody can even predict that. It's not even when they're going to have a formula for this pandemic. And so I, I just like, ma'am, just, I just like to hear from you as to thinking over reconsideration to say, okay, Mr. Mayor, okay, citizens of this city, we're going to do this, not to spend anything, but for the just in case as I would have with a spare tire in my truck. I believe everybody in here who's driving the car has a spare tire, not expecting to have a flat, but for the just in case. And I just look at this as these guys, our bond folk have come up here. We pay them. I mean, you know, give us advice. And they said, hey, man, this is what we planned, that we would just make sure we had this so that even when we go back or whatever, we're going to be strong because we made preparations. The ant make preparations all summer long for wintertime. And when wintertime come, they got food to eat. The slugger has nothing but to say, if I would have, could have, should have. I don't want to be in that number. I got two more years on here, and I don't want to be the reason that this city went down and drained. And I, Councilman Butcher, I just, I know your heart. I just want to hear from you, man.
Councilman Green, thank you. I really try my best to get along with everybody sitting up here. I really do. I've often said on numerous occasions that I can disagree with y'all and get up and walk out and still be your friend. If you call me and need something, I'm going to try to be there. On this, I just fundamentally disagree with borrowing money to pay expenses. I do. And it's, it is on my heart because I do know that we're in dire straits, okay? I realize that. I'm not, but I also don't want to borrow money without the taxpayers having a say. If they want us to borrow that money, we're increasing the debt of every one of us sitting in here, every one of us out there, everybody listening. We're increasing their debt. every one of us out there, everybody listening, we're increasing their debt. And I don't wanna do that. Now, I will say this, the sales tax numbers, if they had not looked better for November, I mean, for March and April, I may have been somewhere else on this. But I looked at them and I thought, you know, look, let's give it a little bit of time before we borrow thirty-five million dollars. Now, on ordinance one twelve, I would like to see what it's gonna end up costing us, because I'm gonna use this analogy, okay? And I was telling somebody this, and I don't tell a whole bunch of people this, but back in '08, when the real estate market busted, I went from making almost two hundred thousand dollars a year to making nothing because of Dodd-Frank. Changed the way I did business, couldn't go out and solicit for business anymore. It's a very sickening feeling to have a house note that's almost three thousand dollars a month and not have any way to pay it. And you're rolling quarters to go buy your kids a Sonic hot dog that was a dollar. I've been there. So I don't like being preached to about the rich guy that lives in southern Texas, which I hear from time to time, and that's fine. I take it. I live in a very modest house, I drive a modest car. Maybe one day I'll have a nice one, but, Councilman Bowman and I were talking about that earlier. But anyway, I wanna know, okay, so let's say that Grayson and Heather are having trouble this month, and I know I'm not gonna be able to make my car payment. I can go down to Chevy Land, and somebody's gonna loan me the money. Now, I only owe twenty-five thousand dollars on my car right now. Only got two years to pay for it, okay? I can go to Chevy Land, get one for seventy-two months, I can probably skip two payments. I'm in the rears. I've gone from owing twenty thousand dollars now to owing seventy thousand dollars, but I've skipped those two payments. That's my problem with this, and I believe also there's been some things, I would like to know the cost, okay? We've gone to Regions, is Regions the only one? I know that there's several different bond people. Is Regions the only one that's offered a loanless money?
Yes, sir.
Regions is the only one?
Nobody else in America.
That's it. We can't even get a quarter from.
We can't have a church fish fry. We can't even get a food truck.
The only one for the emergency backup plan, and that's why I say it again, that the city is preparing for the worst, not that they're getting ready to go and spend this money on tomorrow. I think Ms. Fields-Jones has looked at this in its entirety, you know? So I give her more, I give her extounding credit for that. Because you're not just going out there to spend. I bet many of you sit up here have a credit card in your wallet in case of emergency. If you need to pull it out because you don't have the financial means to go over there and you don't have cash on hand, you use that credit card. Not for the purpose of just going out and doing what you wanna do, use that credit card to fulfill a need right there with the tip of knowing that you have to pay that money back. I think that's the only thing that is being said with the city, and I'm gonna go back again. When we had those floods and those command meetings that were there, always it was said, "You prepare for the worst and hope for the best." If our numbers continue on that path, great for us, but we don't know when we're going into phase three. We don't know, and even what phase three is going to look like at that particular point. So it's good for us to have this backup plan in place. At least we know we have it, because I doubt it very seriously. She's gonna let anybody arbitrarily spend any money that they don't have to, you know? She tight like that.
On the other thing, Councilman Butcher, you said, when you looked at the numbers in March, they, April, where?
July was pretty strong too.
But that's because you had people who, they didn't go to work, they was making, they was getting six hundred dollars plus three hundred dollars. So they were getting more money to stay at home than to go to work. So now, they've cut all that money off. So whereas they was, you was looking at the taxes of folk having more money than what they normally had, now it's gone back down to zero. So whereas it was looking pretty then, now that that money is gone and the United States Senate, they going home, they say they coming back directly. And so therefore, that money is gone. Congress say, "Well, we got this package, but nobody to vote on it." So now, we're really in a jam. Now those folk that was going out, that was spending this money.
Wasn't that President Trump that said that he's got a package together, but he didn't have anybody to vote on it?
I don't know, I don't.
Reverend, I'm just, I'm asking, I mean.
I don't know.
Anyway.
Well, he has the power to call the Senate in.
If they'll come.
The Senate is, the majority Republicans.
If they'll come.
They won't come, they gone. Mitch said, Mitch said this. Since you brung it up, Mitch said he wasn't voting on nothing. Since you brung it up, Mitch said he was not voting on nothing.
I follow it very closely, Councilman.
And so therefore, like I was saying, it looked good because you got, you got people that was making a hundred and fifty dollars a week, went up to making six hundred a week, plus the hundred and fifty. So the tax supposed to look good, because everybody's spending their money.
Can I ask this question?
Yes, sir.
And I agree with Councilwoman Taylor that we do need to have contingencies in place. And I believe that that's something we should have been doing twenty months ago, and I agree with you whenever, when it comes to the bond. I supported the fire bond, I never was against it. I disagreed with some other areas of it, but I did support the bond. I wanna go on the record, at least for fire and police, I did. You know, and I'm gonna bring this up. So we walked into this with a deficit. We walked into this with no surplus at all, is that, that's right, right, Mayor?
Correct.
We, the seven-dollar trash fee passed, right?
Yes, sir.
What, we were supposed to walk away with, what, three point one million dollars in reserve from that, right?
Councilman Nicholson, is that right?
He voted for it.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, isn't that the right figure he talking about?
Well, look, I mean, I'll say, I have looked at financials, the controller has prepared, they're unaudited for the end of 2019, and they show a significant surplus that wouldn't be there but for that sanitation. So I thought that.
So we do have more of a surplus now because of that.
Well, they're not audited, not filed, but based on what I've seen, yes. I thought that was a good initiative by the mayor and was the right judicial decision, so.
Well, I'm giving you props, I'm giving the mayor props, I'm not dissing y'all. But that is the type of initiative, even though I didn't vote for it, the only reason I didn't vote for it, the mayor knows why. We talked about it, I wanted fire and police included in that. So that's the reason I voted against it.
But we wouldn't in a pandemic at that.
No, I understand, I understand that. But I just think that for my constituents, and we all represent people, and we represent diverse districts. I mean, we really do. And I get a lot of calls about this. My constituents don't wanna borrow any more money. And I tend to agree with that. In two thousand eight, going back to the hot dog rolling dollar bills, I had a lot of debt, and I will never be in that spot again because of that. So this is a fundamental thing for me, and it's not a diss against anybody, it's not political. I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I have said it over and over again, and I will say it right now. I want Mayor Perkins to be successful because his success equates to my success as a business owner in the city of Shreveport and a homeowner. I wanna be able to sell my property at some point, and him being successful and having good streets and having good roads, having a good fire department means that my property will remain and have its value. So it's not political for me, it's just a fundamental disagreement that I have. And you got, you got other people here to vote for it. I just personally can't right now, but it's not political for me. I want him to be successful, I do. I want every one of us sitting up here to be successful.
You say you can't vote for, so we're gonna, we'll wait till the next go around and maybe?
I think we should wait till the next go around, but then and see what other information comes forward.
And I agree.
Or do you wanna postpone this and bring the other one back and just postpone this one?
We wanna, no, let's go on past this one, and then we go back and postpone the other one so that we wouldn't have to go through the process of reintroducing it.
Well, if you want, so it can either fail today and get reintroduced, I'm talking about number one twelve. You wanna postpone this one?
No. Post, yeah, let's postpone. Let's postpone this.
We can postpone this one, which is still cutting the deadline close.
Yeah.
You can bring the other one back.
Yeah.
Maybe even bring, if you bring the other one back as emergency legislation, it gets unioned and was supposed to.
Let's do that.
The agenda.
Let's do that.
The same day.
Let's postpone this one.
I would just like the record to reflect that the councilman Betty White does have a Snickers now, he showed it to me. He said, "I'm not myself without my Snickers." He's someone just passing some more snacks.
Can I get Ms. Bogan to come back up, please?
So that, so that we won't have to reintroduce one twelve, I'd like to like offer motion to postpone.
So it's a substitute motion to postpone from Councilman Green.
Second.
Second from Councilman Nicholson. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify one point on the thirty-five million. We keep calling it a bond that'll mature in ten years. It's a line of credit note that expires or a mandatory tender, if you will, December thirty-first, 2021. When that expires, at that point, you can roll it to a ten-year note. But if you have not drawn anything down, you can pay off the two dollars that's in the account and be done with it. Again, it's a mandatory tender on December thirty-first, 2021 that has the option, and you as council can decide that if it rolls into a ten-year bond.
Madam Chair.
So, let me say something. I'm sorry, I have questions for her, but I have, I wanna go back to Councilman Green's question about the rules if we wanted to reconsider a vote today.
The prevailing party has to bring up a motion to reconsider.
So if you were a no vote and it failed, even though it failed three-three, the prevailing party could still bring it up?
You can reconsider it, and when you bring up the motion to reconsider it, I'm assuming you could also bring up a motion to postpone it.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But has to be from one of the individuals who voted no.
Well, let's finish discussion and then we'll get back to that. Councilwoman, where were we, I'm sorry?
I had a question, Councilwoman Taylor had a question.
Ladies first, Councilwoman Taylor.
I'm good.
She did, she did.
Councilman Butcher.
Just for the record, I wanna make sure I'm clear on this, and I am, but just for the record where people understand this.
Okay.
If, if we borrow ten dollars, and that's all we borrow until the maturity of the line of credit, then we only owe ten bucks.
That's all you owe.
Plus interest.
And interest, I apologize, yes, and interest.
But if, and I think another thing, you know, it has to come to the council in some form or fashion to be voted on any of the money that we spend. Is that correct?
I actually had mentioned that to Ms. Jones, that that is something we can, you tell us what you want to see, and we can put that in the documents. We have not gone through any documents on this with it being a line of credit. We have not, council hasn't, lawyers haven't set down, we haven't set down with the administration to find out, you know, how you want it to look. We have to get your approval first, that's something we can put in there.
And since we're all being honest and not playing games, there is being, there is being legislation that has been asked to put a spending limit on what the mayor does, not to say that he's gonna go and start buying Rolls Royces and Teslas with this money, which has been said before, which I do not agree with, but.
Tesla pay you for.
Just had to bring it up.
Tesla pay you for, go ahead.
But, you know, there are certain things that the mayor does have the authority to do without council approval. And the only way, and I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for it, but if we're gonna reconsider it, the only way is there would have to be some type of limit of us drawing this money out of this.
Done.
I'm not saying I vote for it, I'm just saying that's the only way that I could do it.
Done.
Anyway.
Done.
I told y'all, Ms. Fields-Jones is not going to allow anything to happen.
Whatever we need to put in there, whatever, did you hear what he just said?
I heard.
Whatever we need to put in there, because I spend restless nights wondering how this city's gonna make it. So whatever you need to put in there, done.
But here's my fear, we can't, we can't agree on borrowing thirty-five million dollars. So, I mean.
We're gonna put, we're gonna put, fix the legislation, so we all have a say as to where it go.
The substitute motion right now is on one twelve to postpone it. And then we can go from there, thank you, Ms. Butcher. Then we can go from there and look at the reconsideration on the other.
So would y'all please vote to postpone?
I'll second, I'll second to postpone.
Let's call for the vote. Let's finish this part of the agenda and then go back to the reconsideration after one fifteen before we get to that zoning case.
Okay.
And that passes unanimously. Ms. Bogan, you weren't keeping the time on that, were you, on that filibuster? On that team effort filibuster? Let's continue.
Ordnance one thirteen, amending the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana relative to fees for the neighborhood participation plan as well as wireless communications. And this has, we've received a request from the NPC to withdraw this from the agenda, and they'll bring it back next time.
So move.
Motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman to withdraw, call for the vote. All right, let's continue. Passes unanimously, we can keep going.
Ordnance one fourteen, amending various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman. Call for the vote. Passes unanimously, let's continue.
Ordnance one fifteen, closing and abandoning an additional portion of Sugar Leaf Trail in the Lindbrook subdivision, units five and five A and section thirty-five, township seventeen north, range fourteen west.
Move to postpone. Second.
Motion to postpone from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman, call for the vote. Passes unanimously, let's continue. This, that was one fifteen and one sixteen together, or?
Ordnance one sixteen, zoning case number nineteen dash three one three dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Lynnwood Avenue and Interloop Expressway, extending approximately one hundred and thirty-four feet west of Ponderosa Trail and one hundred and forty-five feet north of Sugar Leaf Trail, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R one seven, single-family residential district and C three, general commercial district, to O R Office Research District.
Move to postpone. Second.
Motion from Councilman Green, a second from Councilman Bowman to postpone, call for the vote. And that passes unanimously, now.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
You can't because you went on the prevailing side, because it failed originally.
Well, it was three-three.
But.
So it was voted down.
Yeah.
It's actually, it actually did not pass, so it has to be by the prevailing side, which is the side that voted no.
I was gonna make, so I was gonna make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm on medication, I've.
We all are at this point.
You're on medication, he needs Snickers.
I mean.
I'm on medication, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Is it possible to make the motion and the, and the sub motion to postpone at the same time?
At least two separate motions.
Two separate.
Okay, so the motion to reconsider.
Second.
And then we vote? All right. Call for the vote to reconsider, to reconsider only. That passes with one against. And now I'd like to do a motion to postpone that legislation.
Second, you making motion?
I made the motion, and the chair, a second from Councilman Green, and I call for the vote.
Madam Chair.
Discussion, Councilman Butcher.
I voted to, because I wanted to have this discussion real quick. So the difference would be about a week, is that correct?
A week.
I mean, it would be a two-reader. Again, if the mayor puts this back on, which Councilman Green asked him to do, and he said he was gonna do it, if he puts it back up, it would be a two-reader, correct? So we'd lose it, two weeks.
But if we postpone it.
But if we were postponed, then we could consider it the next council meeting.
So it'd be, we'd be looking at four weeks if he puts it back in.
If he puts it, if he had, if the mayor has to redo it, then it'll take four weeks.
Two additional weeks.
Yes, sir. If we postpone it today, then we'll only have two weeks.
So our, our time crunch on this, why, I heard her say that there's a possibility we could lose the Regions deal and all that, correct? And that's one, Mayor, is that right?
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, the potential of losing Regions' interest altogether.
That's right. Yeah, the potential of losing Regent's interest altogether. Then the second piece is that, you know, we, we don't want to be in a market that's influenced by the national election, which could be volatile. And bond counsel and, and may can speak to that.
There's a deadline, I believe, September twenty-eighth on the, on the Regent's deal.
That's still within our... That we're still within our...
No, we're not. We're missing a bad date.
But let me add this, and it sounds like y'all believe that you're voting to approve the transaction, but that thirty-five million, you giving us authorization to move forward to the State Bond Commission. This debate, like y'all having this debate, the State Bond Commission would have the same debate to determine whether or not the City of Shreveport has the ability to repay it, whether or not it's good for the city. It's just giving us an opportunity to go forward to the State Bond Commission. Now, once, let's say the State Bond Commission approves the transaction, then we come back before you, you all, y'all can say the same debate and decide whether or not it's the best thing for the city. We trying to move forward to get to the State Bond Commission, which is actually set for September seventeenth. We needed this, on the thirty-five million, to move forward with presenting that to them. And once we have that approved, we still have to come back to the, to you guys to make a decision.
So if we pass the deal with the State Bond Committee on the seventeenth, then that means we got to wait a whole period of time to go back to them to get another appointment. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, let's say the council say, hey, we moving forward on September seventeenth. We will ask for them to put the City of Shreveport loan on the agenda for the seventeen. And they say, they vote on it, and they say, you know what? We believe that the city needs it, and we believe that, you know, you can repay it. Okay, then, from that point, we have to come back to you all when we have it, before closing the transaction.
So this is preliminary, more or less?
Preliminary approval.
So, so regardless, if, if we move to postpone this, vote. Because I'm not going to vote yes for it today, so that's, that's not going to happen. But if we move to postpone it, we still are not going to be able to get on this bond agenda.
But it's, you know, just, it's more bond commission meetings for your purposes. So, we're just trying to, the city had a strategy in place. We're trying to hit, hit all the marks based on financial advisor. So if you postpone it, and the commission says, you know, we're going to kick you to October, that would happen. A little different in the water, but...
So it'd be, it'd be pretty much the same thing at this point, of just going with it like it is, letting the mayor represent it to us, as opposed to postponing it, because you're only going to gain two, because you're still not going to be able to get on the agenda, right?
We, if y'all move forward and vote yes, we'll present that to the State Bond Commission.
Right, on the seventeenth, right? I mean, okay. All right.
So your motion is to postpone, and I second it.
That's the motion that's on, is to postpone.
Right.
But that puts us outside of the window.
That's correct.
But at least it's not, at least it's not defeated.
Because the other thing is just to go back and see if we end up with a split vote again.
Well, I'll just make the comment that none of the substance impacting the decision has changed, except presumably the vote on merit would be the same.
Yeah. I mean, my feelings about it have not changed. My willingness to consider it might change, but really, I feel like it's not...
But would you consider it?
It's not, it doesn't go along with my fundamental beliefs about what we should do, but at the same time, I don't know. Which is why I'd rather postpone it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'll go with you on postpone.
But it still puts us in a...
Of course. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good.
Chief Whitehorn. I'm not going to ask the mayor, I'm going to ask you. Can he veto this?
I don't know.
I just asked the question.
I don't know.
Mayor Perkins, can you veto this?
I don't, I don't think I can, because it didn't succeed, and it's a three-three. It would have to be something that would have succeeded four to three, and then I vetoed it.
Right.
And I mean, Danielle, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That's a procedural question.
We were just discussing that, Mayor, and I'll look into that and let you know.
I still stand where I stand. And Councilman Butcher, I get what you were saying. I understand a hundred percent.
Madam Chair.
I didn't roll, I, I, I didn't roll quarters, I had to roll pennies. You see what I'm saying? So it's totally, still totally different, totally different, totally different.
I understand.
If, if the best we can do today is to postpone it, I'd like to postpone it.
Let's postpone.
That means it gets to live to see another day, even though it throws off the timeline.
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Vote and postpone.
All right, it passes four to two. What's next? There are no, or am I, let me skip right y'all, sorry.
I think y'all had appeals.
Madam Chair, before you proceed to appeals, I'd like to move to withdraw ordinance sixteen, one-sixty-one of twenty-nineteen, and one-sixty-two of twenty-nineteen. These have been on the agenda for some time. I still am of the opinion that we need to revisit chapter ten in our regulation of the sale of alcohol. But I hope we can do that in a comprehensive way, in a manner that, that has consensus on the council. So I withdraw, I move to withdraw those two pieces.
Motion to withdraw ordinance one-sixty-one, ordinance one-sixty-two from the table, a second by Councilman Butcher. Motion from Nicholson, second from Butcher. Call for the vote. It passes unanimously. And there's no other table legislation to remove, correct, Ms. Ewing?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. We have no property standards appeals today. We have the, okay, for the revocation of the alcohol beverage permit, do we need a motion to postpone there?
Yeah, a motion to continue it to the September twenty-second meeting. We have received confirmation from both the attorneys to, to continue that to the next meeting.
So is that a motion to continue from Councilwoman Taylor, a second from Councilman Bowman? Call for the vote. That passes unanimously. We have an appeal case number twenty-four-seven-c to consider today. And that's our MPC. So what do you need me to do?
Do you guys, a motion to uphold the MPC decision?
Which is to, the MPC is to...
The motion to uphold the MPC decision, which would grant Dr. Burnham what her application, her application with whatever stipulations they may have put on. If you are in favor of upholding that, we would vote yes. If you are not in favor, and you want the appeal to go through, you would vote no.
I still move, and I hope that Ms. Burnham does a good job at upholding it.
It's a motion from Councilman Bowman, a second from Councilman Green. I do want to state that I looked over this several times. I heard a lot from the appellant, and I respect where he is coming from in some parts of his theory. But overall, I never, I didn't hear from Dr. Burnham. And so I finally was like, I don't, I need to hear the whole thing. I need to hear from the property owner. So I cyber stalked her, and so I got her phone number and called her out of the blue to ask her what was up and get her side of things. And this is also in addition to getting a full narrative from the MPC director. And what I see is that we probably do need to start considering, as far as policy and land use policy, some sort of hardship overlay that would give us areas like this, where we're putting all of these different rules from the Unified Development Code, where there are areas that are otherwise not attractive to developers, and you might have people who need a low barrier of entry to start. You're literally a startup trying to do what you're doing, and it's that much more expensive to do it because of all of these Unified Development Code things, and trying to do it in historic districts, or whatever it is. Because I think that that would have made it easier for Dr. Burnham to do what she was doing originally, without having to jump through all these hoops and literally decide, fine, whatever, I'm going to throw all the money at the problem. We're literally now at the point where she's like, you know what? I'm paying for it, I can afford it, it's my money, it's my property. Why would we hold her up anymore? If I've got, if I've got an MPC director and staff looking at this and saying, this is what works, and it's conforming to this area, and it's within the standards of the MPCs in the Unified Development Code, and she's adhering to and complying with what's being asked by the traffic engineer, I don't think we need to gatekeep on her anymore. And that's what I feel like we've got, is gatekeeping. And I think it happens around the city a lot, in particular in areas that are close to hardship, where people are trying to fight to hold on to an area, but instead of working with people, we gatekeep because we're not sure that we like what they're trying to do. And they don't always have to tell us. So I, I'm ready to uphold the MPC on this and wish Dr. Burnham the best. I won't filibuster anymore, because I think we're all kind of on the, hopefully on the same page about this at this point. But it's, it's problematic, because I live in this area, I understand all the issues we have in Highland, as far as trying to get the right things and make sure that people aren't coming in and doing crazy stuff next door to us. But I also realize that our best chance at having multifamily and multi-income, mixed income, mixed income, single-family, multifamily, in harmony with mixed use, is new owners coming in and providing some sort of services and doing business and developing new property that's better than the blighted property we can't get demolished. So for those reasons, that's, that's where I am. But the gatekeeping is the thing that I'm really just kind of concerned about, because I think that we've got a problem with it, because it raises the barrier to entry to people that are trying to get in. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll just briefly make the comment that my inclination is to show substantial deference to members concerning intra-district zoning matters. That's been my consistent practice, and so I'm going to continue with that concerning this issue.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I will echo what Councilman Nicholson says, unless he has a cell phone tower that is going to be constructed under, right above his house.
I have, I have a particular dislike for cell phone towers, Councilman Butcher.
But no, I, I, I agree. This is, this is in Councilwoman Fuller's district. And, and I do think that, I've always said this, we need to be as business friendly in the City of Shreveport as we can be. And so I'm, I'm going to have to support Councilwoman Fuller, since this is her district.
Dr. Burnham, I bid you much success on this endeavor. Councilwoman Fuller, you have my support with that. Thank you. Call for the vote.
I voted.
Me too. That passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Are there any other appeals, Ms. Ewing?
There are not.
Any reports from officers, boards, committees? Mrs. Ewing, is there a clerk's report? Mayor Perkins, I'm sorry, I see you up there, but I ADD'd on it. Was that new?
It's, it's, you want somebody to come in?
Yeah, the CFO's button wasn't working, so I tapped it forward. We're fine.
Did you get it in there? I'm sorry.
No, she's fine.
Did you already ask about board committees?
The clerk's report? Yes, I did. You missed it.
Just real quick, please.
Councilman Butcher.
We do plan to have another, another Public Safety Committee meeting in the near future to discuss raises. Also, Councilwoman Fuller, I would like for us to have a infrastructure meeting. One of the biggest complaints that I got, I think all the utilities worked very, very well trying to get everybody's power back on, and during, during the hurricane. However, I have gotten several, several complaints about Comcast. And, and I know that there's some regulations there. I even talked to Foster Campbell's office about it, and it's a mess. But I would like for us to have a infrastructure meeting and have members, somebody from Comcast to come and explain to us what's going on. Because we had a, it was actually in your district, but there was a tree down on Fairfield. And from what I understand, they had trouble because they had a fiber optic line going through it, and they didn't want to cut Comcast wire, but they ended up having to. And it's just, because nobody can get in touch with Comcast. So we need, we need to have them come in and talk to us. If they don't want to be the provider for internet and cable for the City of Shreveport anymore, then maybe we need to be looking elsewhere. Thank you.
Second on that.
Okay. Thank you all. I would say, I would like for some Property Standards Committee meeting soon, so we can talk about, like the, yeah, I want to wrap, I want to post mortem on Dawn's to see what we can do to never have to have that happen again.
I agree. I'll call him.
I, I'm, I'm still living it, so, but we got to do better. Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Ewing. Did you have a clerk's report?
Yes, we received the following letter on September third, twenty-twenty, for the appointment of Evody Norris to the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board.
Quick question. And I'm not trying to split hairs, but I'm a nerd when it comes to inside and outside the city. Her address is outside the city limits. Does she have to live in the city limits to be on the Civil Service Board?
This is a reappointment, isn't it? Has she, has she been on the board?
She was appointed, I think, to finish a term, I guess.
So I mean, and I'm, I'm not trying to split hairs, I just noticed that, that her address on her resume is not in the city limits. And I think we went through this with maybe one of the airport board peoples. But I don't, I don't know, I know each board's different.
You're not splitting hairs, and that's like I need a deep conditioner.
Sorry.
Doesn't that say Shreveport on her, on her address?
What's that?
What, what city does it say?
It's Shreveport, but she lives outside the city, off of, off of, uh...
She's off Buncombe Road.
Off of Buncombe Road, but right behind Pastor Green's church.
Well, that's Metro. She's in.
Well, she's paying taxes to Fire District Three, so I, I just, I just, before, before the appointment, I have no problem with, with the candidate, but I just want to make sure we're consistent. If she's outside the city, she's, I don't think she can, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
I am, but I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
So if you could just let us know by the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Ewing, was that everything from the clerk's report? So we don't, we're not looking at anybody for the airport?
No, I just, I just said that.
Don't bring up that part.
I just got all you need. Okay, Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communications before I get in trouble with them up here?
I do not. Nope.
Councilmembers, do you have any additional communications? We will end with a prayer for our friend that's not here with us today, but before we get to that, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I do.
I'll yield a counsel's vote.
I'll do Councilman Bowman, then Councilman Green, and then Councilwoman Taylor.
We have a cleanup in Allendale, Spruceup Sprague Street, Coal Red Project cleanup by the Northwest Louisiana Community Development Corporation. It's going to be Saturday, September twelfth, from ten a.m. to one p.m. Chief Ben Raymond, just to let you know, Spruceup Sprague Street, and cleaning in that area.
I just wanted to ask if, if we can call up Gary Norman, if that's okay with the ministry?
There can't be anything bad going.
Of course not.
Mr. Norman's been awesome.
No. No, he has been, really. I, I thank Mr. Norman. I just wanted to say that I know there's been a lot on your departments, especially with the pickups and the boat pickups, and with trees down and stuff like that. As we have rode through the city as of late, and Councilwoman Taylor and I have both noticed that we're getting more and more calls, and I know you're getting them too, as far as pickups and stuff. And, and when we look at not just the pickups, the rightaways and stuff like that, is it a way that you, and property standards, and, 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 of course, solid ways, public works to get together, to just streets, streets and trains, I mean, to get together, just come up with some kind of plan or something just to make the curbsides and the streets just look a little bit cleaner and better than what they do? I understand that we're going through a pandemic, and I get that it's been, we just had a lot, I know it's, the storm got some stuff out there that we wasn't expecting. But if there's a way or a plan, something that we can get through, of course, in my district, but I know up on the Cooper Road, just to, it has never been, and I shouldn't be speaking for, for District Eight, but it hadn't been a time where we had just went through and just took care of all the, the rightaways and curves up that way. But as I get these phone calls, it's just, you know, making it kind of difficult, especially when we ride and see these things happening, or this just sitting by the wayside, if that makes sense.
And actually, we is. They all work, no fun.
Yes, sir. And, and, you know, the mayor mentioned the plan that we put together to try to clean up after the storm, which is about a four-week plan, and I... And I, I know it's gonna be very aggressive and, you know, a lot of that's gonna be dependent upon how many people I get to work, you know, during, during these weekends and all. But I mean, our intent is to go through and get all, all of the bulk issues picked up.
And I know I'm sending you a lot and calling and trying to send it to you, so I, I, I appreciate that. I mean, you've been doing an awesome job with that and I just wanted to add something else to it. It was just a question that I had, just.
Right, no, and, and we, we understand and, and, you know, certainly, you know, just ask, you know, to kinda bear with us. You know, what I'm trying to keep from doing is sending guys to one part of town and then sending them back across to another part. You know, this, this cleanup will start, will, you know, last a week in each area. And, and, you know, that way we can, you know, if we can get all the councilmen and everybody on the same page to, you know, to tell people, just hang, hang on, we'll be in your area, you know, whatever week it, it will be coming up. I, I think will help us a lot. And, and, you know, we, we do, you know, we're, we're getting and are working with property standards, streets and drainage, as, as well as solid waste, work together to try to get this cleaned up. So like I say, it's gonna be, it's gonna be aggressive and, and I'm sure there'll be some hiccups with it. But, you know, just ask that you, you bear with us and then, you know, certainly if you've got areas that, that are hot and that need, need something done, let me know and we'll, we'll do whatever we gotta do to take care of it.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Mayor, go ahead.
I know one of your biggest things is equipment. Lord have mercy, I just wanna come pull out some lawnmowers with you myself. I know I'm not gonna do much, but I know it'll do something at that point. I don't know if there are any grant opportunities or something that we could look at. If there is something for equipment, I mean, it may be forfeit. But I just need to see if there are some things that we can explore to lighten his load. Because as Councilman Bowman said, I, I know I call them every day so much sometimes. They say, you are right, you didn't call us today. But, um, um, Mr. Norman is excellent for what he does. And at that point, we're working with what he has. And so I, I'm gonna work to, to assist in Councilman Bowman as well to see just how much support that we can literally give your department in that area. Because, you know, I'm always talking about my drainage digits.
Right.
Yes.
We appreciate the help.
Mayor and CAO, is it possible that we can work with the Great American Cleanup for a concerted, concerted effort whenever that weekend is? I know it's coming up. Shreveport Green with the Great American Cleanup should be coming soon.
Yeah, we've worked with them before. We can get in touch with Ms. Curtis and see.
While we have all the community volunteers out on deck and all their teams and then having the city workers out at the same time, we can make a, a big dent in some of it.
Grayson and I go roll up our change and try to get you some equipment.
I got some quarters, I know that's bad.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna borrow, we're gonna borrow a food truck and go do fish plates.
I'm glad you found my, my, my.
I'm sorry, we shouldn't be abusing you anymore. Thank you, Mr..
Can I say, could I say one thing? I, I do wanna give, you know, give kudos to the, to the guys and gals that, that work for Public Works. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you, they've worked hard. And I, I think they've done a, an amazing job of, of getting the streets open and like the one that Mr. Butcher mentioned a minute ago. I mean, that was one that we had to, actually what happened was that, that fiber optic was in the tree and we got our guys out from, from traffic engineering that came out and, and got the wire up so it would clear the road so we could get it back open again. But I'm, but it, it, it's tough. I mean, they, they worked sandbags hard up until, till the storm. And, and actually the storm had started and we still had people wanting sandbags, you know? And, and they were worn out at that point. And then to have to go, go out from that, from that point and, and start clearing all the streets and all, I think they've done an amazing job with it. And I just wanted to, you know, to give them some, some kudos for the work.
Oh, no, I agree. Yeah, yeah, please send that out to, I mean, streets and drainage, streets and drainage, public works and property standards. Public works and sanitation, I mean, those guys really, really. And a lot of times we, we forget because we, I understand that that's just their job, but it's really a, a service. And I think that, that's, that's on the front line of work that they're doing, the, the sanitation work as well. So I, I appreciate that. So y'all kudos from the council to them too.
Yeah, because if you can't flush us all that you.
Yeah, before you go.
Councilman Green.
I, I just need two of your machines working. I just need two of them. The price of two of them, that's the ones that dig ditches and the ones that clean ditches. Because in my district, all of my ditches are terrible. They hide folk houses and I've talked to you about it before. That they got all kinds of animals up in there and they just need to be cleaned. So how much does a, a machine to do ditches and a machine to clean them ditches, I mean, to clean all, all that debris out the ditches? And every time, I know every time you go out there and you cut one tree in my district, it break down. So what kind of price is on that?
Well, if you're looking at a, at a grade all, which is one of our bigger pieces of equipment, that we had two, we've lost one of them because it, it was a ninety-two went down and we don't have any, not able to repair it. We can't get parts for it. But I mean, that particular piece is, is probably in the neighborhood of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for it. Our, our boom mower is another important part with it. And we're, we're in the process of trying to secure a tractor that we can change the boom mower over to because we've run into some, some issues with putting it on an older mower that we had and hopes to, you know, to save that money, but it's not gonna work. So, you know, we hope to have it up within, you know, probably be about a month time we get it through the purchasing process and get it, and get the, the boom mower actually mounted on it. So, you know, those would be two things that will help us a lot.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, can y'all see if they let us have one on credit?
Hey, whatever it takes at this point. We also are looking into some paving equipment as well at this time. We just, did we already purchase that one piece of equipment that we were talking about when I was out at the yard?
Uh, the, the one for the, I'm, I'm not sure.
It was about a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, that's one that Jarvis is also working on. We have not purchased it yet. We were trying to, have to get this tractor and see what we had left over to be, be able to make that happen. But we think, we think we'll be able to, the, the track machine. It's a, a little, not an excavator, but a Bobcat-type machine. That we can, you know, get, get some mowers that'll get down into some of the ditch areas and all.
Yeah, so we're trying. We are constantly reviewing our budget and our equipment list to see what we can afford.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Is there anything else, any additional communications? Councilman Green, will you lead us in the prayer for Councilwoman Fuller before we?
Yes, ma'am.
Let us pray. Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for enabling us to carry out this meeting in a Christ-like manner. And thank you that it was decent and in order. Lord, we ask that you'd touch Brother Fleury and understand that he's at Willis Night. And of course, you already know, we just ask you to touch him at this hour and let him feel the presence of your spirit. And you made him and you know all about him. I ask that you would send your healing angel over and touch his body in the name of Jesus. And thank you, God, for this day. Thank you for this opportunity. Lord, thank you for what you've done. And we're gonna praise you in advance for what you're going to do for Brother Fle- Fle- Fleury's health and his well-being and bless his family. Lift him up and let them know that you can and you will take care. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.